Good evening. Today is Monday, August 23, 2021, and it is 7:00. And I'd like to call this meeting of the Lansing City Council to order and ask that the clerk, please, clerk, please call the roll.
Okay.
Councilmember Betts. Councilmember Betts is absent. Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Garza is absent. Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are six members present. We have a quorum.
Thank you, and I would note that councilmembers Garza and Betts have both asked for excuse absences, which we will dispense with later on in the evening.
Okay, we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Sure. First, I have someone that I'd like to draw council's attention to this evening to keep in our thoughts. Rachel Willis from the Lansing School Board has asked that I have our thoughts reflect Camilla Singleton Dodd. Camilla was the daughter of the late Bishop Alfred P. Singleton and Lady Elizabeth Singleton, founding pioneers of the Breddhouse Ministries formerly known as the Bethlehem Temple. They were 30 years, and they were a sister to the current pastor of the Breddhouse, Bishop Alfred Singleton II. She passed away surrounded by family on Friday, August 13, 2021. She was a founding member of the Singleton's, which reached the top 40 on the gospel charts in 2006. Her passing was sudden and leaves behind two children. Celebration of her life is scheduled for Saturday, August 28 at 11 at the Breddhouse, so I ask you to keep her and her family in your thoughts this evening. Anyone else from the council? Councilmember Wood?
Thank you, President Spatafor. I have a couple that I'd like us to remember. Linda Sanchez Gonzalez lost her aunt early this morning, so if we could remember Linda in our thoughts and prayers. Joan Bowers' father passed away on August 17 at the age of 96. He coached in the Lansing school system for 26 years. Lastly, for our thoughts and prayers, my nephew, Rick Coleman, who died Saturday of colon cancer at the age of 36. He was a firefighter EMS, and after being diagnosed with colon-rectal cancer, became a 911 dispatcher for the Ashley Fire and Rescue and Gratchett County 911. Please remember Rick's dad, Chuck, his mother, Myrna, Rick's wife, Kristen, his 11-year-old daughter, Ruthie, his 10-year-old daughter, Claire, his eight-year-old daughter, Gracie, and his six-year-old son, Grant.
And his Aunt Carol, of course.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, please join me in a moment of meditation.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, the one nation under God and indivisible, and delivered to you and justice for all.
You have for your approval the printed council proceedings of July 12, 26, and August 9.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I would move the meeting minutes as presented.
Is proper motion before us? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to special ceremonies and presentations, and it's my understanding the first one listed as number two is not going to occur this evening, so we have a presentation for The Apartments West.
Yes, and just for those that are here that aren't part of the presentations tonight, we're going to hear a few presentations before the public hearings on several of the pilot programs. So each organization has here tonight some representatives that will give a comprehensive but pithy presentation on each of the pilot requests. Oh, you know what? I know the two of you really well, so I'm going to ask you to pause for just a minute. We have someone who's going to get sworn in this evening, and I know they'd love to get that handled before. So y'all just stay right there. We're going to have Amanda de Vries come up as a member of the South Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority Board of Directors for a term to expire July 31, 2021. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Amanda was here in development and planning earlier today. She is a co-owner of 517 Coffee Company. I'm absolutely addicted to it. Coffee soda people, coffee soda. It's amazing. So she also by day works for a credit union, but we brought her on, and she's agreed to serve on the Martin Luther King Corridor. There are business owners there. They've done great things in the corridor, and we're so pleased that she has offered to serve. Councilmember Hussein, did you want to add anything with that?
No, it was an absolutely great interview, as expected. We just appreciate the fire, the passion, the excitement that you have for South Lansing. Obviously, your position on South MLK, but we know that your love runs deep for the South Side and the things that you and James and the other owners of 517 are doing right now. And we talked about this, right? You guys made an investment in a difficult part of our community to make an investment in during a very difficult time, and you guys are absolutely rocking over there. And so appreciate what you've already done. Also appreciate the vision that you shared with us during that interview and the fact that you really want to see that corridor move forward, that you want to see blight elimination, support a small business, and the like. So I'm really, really excited about you. I'm bullish about this board. I think you guys are going to do great things, particularly with the onboarding of the fellow. And yeah, welcome.
Yep. So with that, I'll move the motion, move the resolution.
Oh, there is a proper motion before us. I see Councilmember Dunbar has her hand up. Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. I think it was an eyebrow up.
An eyebrow, yes. She smiled at me.
I did an eyebrow up. I just want to acknowledge that these guys started out, if I'm correct, at the South Lansing Farmers Market. So this is an example of somebody that has basically incubated a business in an outdoor setting and then moved to brick and mortar to further their business. And I'm so proud of you guys, and I'm so glad that you chose to stay in South Lansing to do it. So kudos to you.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Congratulations. The clerk will swear you in. All right, gentlemen, while they're signing the paperwork, we'll head and have you get started. So I apologize for the delay, but thank you for the indulgence.
Mr. President, I hate to interrupt, but yes, can you move it closer and make sure the green light's on? Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, Faith, could you adjust the level on that mic, please? Go ahead and give it a try. Is it better, anyone? Hold on, we got city TV. Yeah, we can't hear very well. Turn it up, yeah.
She wants you to talk.
Oh, yeah, just test. Tell us a story. I wonder if that one's better. Yeah, see if that one's better, sorry. We had a big mic test this week, last week, and that's not as good either. Want to come sit up here? We have extra space today.
We found something. Oh, there we go. Somebody found the right button. So, all right, again, I'm Doug Fleming. This is my partner, Sam Spatafor. It was on the third page of the presentation where we start talking about who the partners are. The partners in this group is a development group out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and Chicago, Illinois called General Capital. And then Sam and myself make up the Community Advancement Advisors. We also have a third non-owner partner in the Lansing Housing Commission, which I think you all know that I'm a part of right now. So you can see the experience involved with everybody involved, and I'll talk a little bit more about the involvement of all the parties in the deal. But what we're really looking at today is adding some affordable housing to the city. Right now, there are about 50 affordable housing units with 4,800 low-income units, 27 housing units with voucher that need voucher assistance. Many of the affordable housing communities that we have in the city, as you all know, are very old and have not been modernized to meet resident needs. A lot of it just because of lack of capital in some of those organizations. And one of the things that we've been doing at the Lansing Housing Commission and other developers are trying to do is to invest more money into modernizing our affordable housing in the city. Many ownership groups are not properly capitalized for future success. One of the things that we're going to do as part of this deal and what we've been doing with the other development deals is to make sure that they are not only renovated but capitalized so that the long-term success of the building can be realized. Right now in Lansing, there's about 24,000 households in Lansing that are renters. Of those renting, 13,000 are considered to be overburdened, overburdened under the government standards that you're paying more than 30% of your income towards your monthly rent. The Lansing Housing Commission maintains a waitlist of about 500 people for our Housing Choice voucher program. We just opened that list about two weeks ago. It was open for seven days with no advertising, and we ended up with about 3,500 people signed up in seven days who all indicated a need for additional affordable housing in the city. Some of those do come from outside of the city, but I'm going to say 90% of the people that signed up on the list have an address in or around the Lansing area. So there's still a tremendous need for affordable housing in the city. Again, services, waitlists, often residents living in affordable housing need support for additional services, and we'll talk a little bit about that project. So Apartments West is a unique project in the sense that we are taking a currently unused project, which is the Old West Junior High School. We have a purchase agreement, a letter of intent with the Lansing School District to buy the building. And what we're producing, this building was constructed back in 1919. It has about 150,000 square feet. There's three floors there. We have walked the building a couple of times. It's structurally sound, but it's in poor condition, and every year it deteriorates further and further. So getting the opportunity to develop this asset while it still has a chance, we think is key to the overall success of the project and also to renovate a key asset to the city of Lansing. It does have significant environmental risk. It had coal as its heating, and there's other environmental things that were done back in 1919, as you all know, that are not allowed today. And as we do the renovation of the project, we have to mitigate those under MISTHA rules. We are under contract with the school, and they're in complete support of our effort to try to renovate the school here. The conceptional layout is the next slide. We illustrate 51 one-bedroom units and 24 two-bedroom units. I think the other significant part about this is that we will have two areas of community space. One will be the auditorium, and the other one will be the gymnasium. The intent at this point is to work with community groups, and I've already began to outreach to several different groups in terms of long-term use of these facilities. So these will be things that will be open. We've talked to the school, for example, for the use of the auditorium for musicals and plays. I began conversations thanks to Council President Spatafor with the Lansing Symphony Orchestra about maybe this becoming the home for them. And then as far as the gymnasium, groups like the YMCA or other local athletic groups that may want to use it would be able to use it. You can see the unit mix in there on the first floor. This would have a mix of units. There's 57 units here, though. Of the units, total units available, 57 of the units will be between 60 and 80% AMI, and that's basically people that are working. We're talking about people around $44,000, $50 to $44,000 would qualify to live here. One of the key components to this is the partnership with the LHC and our resident service programs. We'll have a memo of understanding with the development partners to provide resident services. These are the same resident services that we already provide with our other partners that we've been partnering with the last couple of years. LHC does not have the funds to do all the development that we'd like to do, so one of the things that we've done to increase and improve affordable housing in the city in terms of our long-term goal is to partner with other responsible developers, and this is an attempt to do that with these groups. We have developed five pillars of resident services at Lansing Housing Commission: health and wellness, supporting our residents as it relates to that, food security, financial education, educational development, and employment skills. One of our philosophies is that one way to create new affordable housing in the city is to lift people out of affordable housing and create a new unit for someone else to move in. And we really believe that these pillars, when effectively managed and implemented, can do that. And we have been working on this diligently for the last 12 months. I will tell you that COVID has provided a tremendous challenge for us to do a lot of this stuff because of our inability to meet one-on-one or with groups, and our ongoing construction at Lansing Housing Commission has also prevented us from doing this. But we have plans going, and we're going to continue to outreach and work with a variety of different groups in the area, and we continue to outreach with those groups to provide that kind of interaction with these. These same services will be available to the residents of the West Junior High project. Financial investment, we're talking about a $15 million capital project here in Slide 8. High-quality, safe, affordable housing. This will be senior housing downtown in kind of a neighborhood, but right on the edge of the corridor of the office neighborhood corridor. So it's a really great location. There's a lot of mature trees. It's kind of quiet over there. The good thing is, and we'll talk about in a minute, generates new revenue stream for the city, even with the 4% pilot. Currently, it's under the school, so it's not paying taxes, and we will. Cost savings and risk reduction. The annual maintenance to the school district on this building is significant. I think the other thing that needs to be recognized is that if the building is not renovated, there are estimates that just to tear the building down would be somewhere between a half a million and a million dollars just because of the mitigation of the environmental risk and things that would be necessary to take the building down, and you would also have the loss of a really significant historical asset here in the city. We want to drive improvements by bringing the structure, obviously, back up the code. That's part of any development deal that you have to do. Has some local historical significance. We want to maintain that. Malcolm X, Magic Johnson, some of the most noteworthy former citizens of Lansing with the school there. Our intent is to kind of preserve that history and bring it back. General Capital had a school that they did a renovation on. In the back of this presentation, we'll talk about, in the first month and a half they had it open, they had about 800 people come through it. Most of them were just former students that wanted to walk back through their old school and see it again, which is kind of a neat thing to see when you renovate an old school. We're going to create a site layout and pathways to support walking around the community so that people can get downtown. They're not that far from downtown, and then utilize some of the restaurants and other activities that will be available downtown. The development team evaluates the risks and needs of each project. I think the one thing I want to emphasize, and I know you have several pilots before you today, and you have them in front of you on a pretty regular basis, is that each development deal kind of has its own DNA. That's the best way to describe it. You know, everyone is a little bit different in what the needs are and what's going on with that particular development. We're only going to talk about ours here, and what we really did with this slide is to try to provide to you why 4% pilot here makes sense. Just as a point of reference, we're also working on another development deal on the corner of Cherry and Kalamazoo, which is right across the street from us, which will be the future home of the Lansing Housing Commission offices. And we're not looking for, we're going to seek a 10% pilot by right pilot for that because that deal does not require the same economics as this does. So even within ourselves, we have two deals that we're working on right now that will have two different requests based on the economics of the deal. So primarily, the pilot request is 4%. There's a high environmental risk here. When you're dealing with an old building, you don't know what you're going to get into until you get, you know, it's the old story, you don't know what you know until you don't know. And we don't know what we don't know, and that's really what's going on here. So there is a very high environmental risk. We do some projections. You do have to do some preliminary environmental studies that will give us some indication of some of the work that needs to be done. But as you start tearing into stuff, you learn stuff. So there's an additional high environmental risk here. Construction cost risk is up significantly from a year ago. I don't think that's a secret to anybody that reads the newspaper or watches the news, so that has also added to the future of this project and doing the development. Long-term maintenance risk is also a little bit higher in an older building. Just because you're bringing it back up the code, it's still going to deteriorate faster than something that's brand-new because you're not necessarily using new materials. So there's a little bit higher risk there. Other potential uses for the site, truthfully, they're very minimal. It takes a significant investment to use that. I think the building's been empty for 15-plus years, maybe longer than that. So if there was a lot of things that could be done with this building other than what we're proposing, I think it would have already been proposed by someone, probably people smarter than us. But we think this is a really good use of the potential site and maintenance of the asset. Potential feasibility at a 10% pilot, it would not work very well at all. In fact, it probably won't work. So if we go to Slide 10, because I know this is always a question that this council wants to address, one of the things that causes you to have a pilot is that ultimately, we have to get financials through MISTHA. MISTHA is the ultimate financing of all the deals, and they have financial standards. They bought one of them happens to be the debt service coverage ratio. And you can see as we go through the slide that under the debt service ranges, if you get above 1.4 debt service, MISTHA does not, you know, they won't underwrite deals. You get too high where you're having to spend too much money just paying down the debt. And so what we've shown here is that under a 4% pilot, this would have about a 1.9 debt service ratio, which is right in the feasible risk area that MISTHA lights. Not quite as conservative as they would like. They like it a little higher, and they don't want it too high. So MISTHA has a sweet spot in terms of the amount of debt that they want when they underwrite a deal. And so we've kind of tried to indicate that from that 1.1 to 1.3. 10% pilot takes the DSCR down to 1.05. It falls below a line that MISTHA is willing to underwrite a deal at. They just don't like that much debt. They don't think that you're basically setting the project up for failure if you get your debt service out of line there. On the right-hand side, we talk a little bit about the reduction of the construction budget would be likely of 4% pilot. If we go to a 6%, we'd have a 6% reduction. So you're also talking about a lot less equity that comes into the deal when you start moving. So that's the other thing. If we're going to do some of the environmental mitigation and the other kind of construction needs that are needed in a historic building like this, you actually have to end up, you reduce a lot of the equity that's available, which is part of your money that you use to do that. So the last part here that I wanted to point out is that we have examples of recently completed General Capital Group properties. The first one is an independent senior community that's 84, 40, 84 total, Section 42 available, market rate units. This is in Muskegon, Michigan, downtown Muskegon. It's a beautiful property that I've been by and seen a couple of times. The second one is probably the most appropriate to what we're trying to do here. This is an old school in Berkshire, Sheboygan Falls, Wisconsin. You can see some of the units, and this is really going to be typical of what we'll see there. When you go into a school renovation, one of the things that happens is you've got a bunch of odd-sized rooms. You know, you've got the old chemistry lab that's bigger than the regular English classroom. And so what our intent to do is to leave the walls intact that are there to the extent that we can, and then you work around the existing structure to make units. So you're going to have some with some high ceilings. Some are going to be a little bit longer and narrow in that kind of situation. So it creates a situation where not even all the one-bedrooms are exactly the same. They're all going to have kind of their own character to them depending on where they're located at in the building. There'll be a lot of rooms, a lot of units that will be similar, very similar, because some of the classrooms are similar, but there's also going to be some that will be very unique. Then Berkshire Stevens Point, independent senior community as well. That was a mixed use with some commercial space that they also built. You can see kind of the different type of units that are available there as well. And then the last one is Greenwich Park. This is another project that they did on the lakefront in Milwaukee. So I want to be brief per President Spatafor's instructions, but I also want to make sure that we got all the information in. I do talk fast, but I'm welcome to answer any questions that the group has now on the presentation.
Sure. Councilmember Wood? Thank you, Mr. Spatafor.
Thank you. Couple of questions. First of all, is there anyone from the Lansing Housing Commission that's going to benefit from, as an individual, from this project?
Individual person, you mean, or a member, resident?
No, an individual person that is part of the management team or
Yes.
the Board of Directors?
Yes. I am a consultant with the Lansing Housing Commission. I'm not an employee, but I am part of the development team that's part of this.
So will you continue to work as part of the Housing Commission?
Yes.
So you'd be handling both positions?
Yes.
All right. I can remember at least four years ago, it might have been more than that, that we sat with members of the Housing Commission, and part of the information that we heard when we were talking about South Washington was that it, the idea of having a high-rise and working from that perspective was outdated and something that shouldn't be done. So how do you put forth this concept based on that information, previous information?
Well, I think the information on the high-rise at Washington, first of all, it's five stories. This is only three. The second is that this is a senior building. One of my problems with the South Washington building, and I think I made those comments, is it's very difficult to manage a senior and family project together. And that was the difficulty of South Washington, which is why, as we move through the RAD process down there, we have moved it to a senior preference building. So as the construction is completed, that will become a senior building as well.
So this will be a senior building, period?
Yes.
Okay. One of the things that you had started, and I'm not sure where it is in play right now, was the Citizens Council. Is there going to be one in this development as well or not?
The Citizens Council is a direct representative of a HUD rule. The HUD provides money to each one of any public housing. It's not even HUD. It's public housing. They provide money for citizens councils that want to form. So as it relates to public housing, the Lansing Housing Commission has always allowed citizen councils at any of our properties where they want it to form. In fact, we were very supportive of the one in South Washington, but the leadership has been unable to basically organize themselves into that. We did a lot of supportive stuff for them, and they've not been able to follow through on actually getting themselves organized. So this is not a public housing, so it doesn't have a citizens council. If the citizens want to get together and have a resident group like you can in any housing, they're obviously allowed to do that.
And then my last question is, based on some of the other Lansing Housing Commission sites, there were wraparound services that came and went, and, you know, there were needs for those, but because there wasn't either adequate place to have them or other issues that were going on. So what is there, you talked about some of those when you made your presentation, what is the guarantee that they will continue?
Well, the guarantee is only what I can say, and that is that as the executive director of the Lansing Housing Commission, I'm very passionate about that portion of it. And we have spent not only money but time and effort in doing that. Even in the construction process, we are now adding to, for example, in South Washington, we're going to have a food processing area. So we have the gardens that we've started down there and expanded, and our residents can go out and plant their food. And then in the fall, we are going to have in the building itself, when the construction's completed, commercial-sized freezers and their completed, commercial-sized freezers and their ability to go in and process their own food. We have Michigan State coming in to assist the residents in doing that. That's just one example of the five pillars that we talked about. We have a literacy program that we're working on. We're working with the City of Lansing. I spent about 30 minutes on the phone the other day in support of Judy Keeler and working with them and the city in a Bloomberg grant to provide literacy to our children that live in the public housing department. And again, if you want me to spend time going through all we're doing in resident services, I would gladly do it. We just held two block parties, one at Leroy Frow and one at Hildebrandt, in the last two weeks, where we signed kids up for Head Start. We had this Lansing School District there where they could sign up for the Lansing School District. We had the Ingham County Department of Health there so they could sign up for insurance services or health services that they needed. We had the Literacy Coalition there as well. We had our Dolly Parton people there. We got our 200th family to sign up for our literacy program that we're sponsoring through Dolly Parton Foundation. And there was a variety of other groups that were there as well. So I can't tell you what's going to happen beyond my leadership, Councilwoman Wood, but I can tell you, as long as I'm the head of the Lansing Housing Commission, we will have a robust resident service program. And any development partner that we work with will also allow us to provide those same services. We get synergy when we have more people. If I go to Sparrow Hospital and say, "I have 10 seniors for a senior program," that says something, but it doesn't say the same that I have 250 seniors at my disposal. And we can create a lot of different programming when we get bigger numbers, and we can have the volume to do some of these things that we can do.
And I appreciate your comments, but again, this pilot that we're looking at is either a 30- or 40-year pilot. So you're not going to be here, I'm not going to be here, but the repercussions of what this creates will be here. So that's why I'm asking some of these questions.
And I appreciate that, and that's why I'm not going to commit beyond my term as the Executive Director, so.
Other questions? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for being here, Mr. Fleming. So along the same lines, so is, this is not a Lansing Housing Commission-related project, not even capital, General Capital Group? That's not, is that related to?
No.
Okay. Because I was just a little confused. I know that you're obviously the head of that, and when you mentioned some things, it was kind of like, almost like it was like a partnership.
It is a partnership. There's just not an economic ownership on behalf of Lansing Housing Commission. We're also in partner with MVAH and the Stadium North Project. Both of those projects that are going to be under construction here in the next probably year, Lansing Housing Commission has a similar partnership with them. We have a partnership with a group in East Lansing where we're doing that. We actually have a partnership with Walter French. We're a part of the Walter French Project as well. The vouchers that the Lansing Housing Commission provides has been the economic engine for a lot of the affordable housing here in the city. And I'm talking millions of dollars. I mean, ourselves, we're over $60 million, and if you add in the price of these other projects that we're a part of and that we're partnering with in a variety of different levels, we're talking about well over $150, $160 million in investment in the city relative to the different variety of partnerships that we have. The long-term intent of the Housing Commission is to improve the affordable housing in the city. We can't do that on our own. We're not by, per se, developers ourselves. So we partner with other groups in a variety of different partnerships. And each one of those partnerships that I just described have a little bit different terms in terms of what the partnership is. But the primary term is that the resident services that Councilwoman Wood just talked about is the cornerstone of us being able to provide those services there. We also have some vouchers involved, and we're also going to be able to have some of our housing choice voucher folks be able to live there as well.
Okay, thank you. That helped clear up a little bit, but I still have a couple more questions. So does the resident records follow someone from Lansing Housing Commission to this proposed affordable housing place?
What records would you be speaking of?
I don't know, if they pay their rent on time, if they have a noise complaint, anything like that?
Yes. Every building that rents will all do a criminal credit and a resident landlord background check. And so whatever is in your record goes any place that you're going to go rent.
Sure, but that's a criminal record and your eviction history, pretty much.
Well, there's still a landlord reference in there as well, and there's a credit check that goes as well. Almost every, I don't know of anybody that does leasing that doesn't do those basic background checks.
Sure, those were the basic ones, but I asked, like, their resident records, like, if they have anything internal with Lansing?
No, no. The only thing that will be shared is anything that's public.
Okay. And for the other projects that you partnered in, Lansing Housing Commission partnered in because you're interested in affordable housing throughout the city partnership?
Correct.
But not like any money or ownership? Or did I mistake that?
No, it depends. In two of the deals, we have an ownership interest, and the other ones, we do not.
Okay, so this one you do not have?
No.
Okay.
There will be a financial interest, though, in that we have a memorandum of understanding that they will be paying Lansing Housing Commission money for our resident services program. So again, in response to Councilwoman Wood, we're going to be generating income so that we can continue to provide these services.
Okay. Okay. And then were you, sorry to get, like, personal, but were you partners, like, project partners where you possibly may benefit on any of those other projects?
No.
Is this, I guess, just because, I mean, you know, I want to support everything. So far, sounds good-ish, but of course, I want to talk to everybody else as well. But I just want to kind of get to, like, the bottom of, because I'm so used to seeing you with Lansing Housing Commission, and then, like, I'm trying to figure out if it's related and how much, and then that's all.
I understand, and that's one of our concerns, too. And our board knows, as we bring these projects to our board, we're very clear with everything that's going on, who the partners are and what our financial relationships are with each one of these. We have extensive reports with each one of our boards on all of our different projects that we're involved in.
And the other partner is, is it General Capital Development in Wisconsin?
Yes, that's correct. They have eight current projects in the state of Michigan.
And they knew you were the person to talk to to make something happen?
I get calls from developers every day, sometimes two and three. This time of year, because of the tax credits, you know, the October round, every day. We met with a, Sam and I met with a developer this afternoon. We are continuing to seek partnerships in a variety of different ways to increase and improve the affordable housing in the city of Lansing. We really see that as our ultimate mission. It's going to come in a lot of different forms, and this just happens to be one of those generations.
And last part of the question, so are these all vouchers, or is it like, do you talk about rent to us later?
No. I've talked to you right now, these are not vouchers. The only vouchers that will be in this project will be the Lansing Housing Commission vouchers that we're going to provide as a part of the tax credit application.
Okay.
I think there's nine, I think there's nine vouchers in this one. The rest of them will be, it'll be affordable housing. So, for example, a first-year police officer will be able to live, a single police officer will be able to live in this building. I'm not their senior, but, you know, that's where the levels are, the income levels are, but.
Okay, I guess I got to check what the exact definition is. It's probably a range, though, but I think.
Yes, it is. There's some 80% units, 60% units on down in terms of AMI. I have the numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, that's fine.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. I've got Councilmembers Spitzley and then Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of questions. Will there be free Wi-Fi and air conditioning in these buildings?
Yes, there will be air conditioning. I don't know about the Wi-Fi. I don't know if that's, we've talked about that yet.
Okay.
Usually what we do in our buildings is that we have at least an area that there's free Wi-Fi. For example, in South Washington, down in our community room, we have free Wi-Fi.
But you have, but you also, okay. So you talked about your board. So your board knows the connection between this deal and what you're doing, and they're okay with that?
Well, we've talked to them about this deal and all the other deals. As we present each month, we'll be presenting the updated details of this on Wednesday when our board meets.
Okay. So management of, let me back up. This is, so when you say senior, is there a legal definition of senior?
55 and disabled.
So a disabled person isn't necessarily a senior?
Correct.
Who's going to, one of the things that concerns me is always the management of these buildings after they're built. You know, before your time, we had some management challenges at the Lansing Housing Commission. So what's the management structure going to be for this one?
We have talked to the developer, and one of the other involvements of Lansing Housing Commission is that the current management company that is managing our properties and will manage our properties as we go through the RAD transition will also be the management company on this. So from a standards, in terms of how we manage properties and how we'll be managing properties into the future, it will be LHC standards because it will be our management company.
My final question is, how long, how long do you have to maintain it as senior and disabled?
I think for the length of the contract, it's a 40-year affordability contract.
All right, thank you.
I mean, you can petition, just to be fair, I think you can petition to change that, but it would take HUD's agreement to be able to do that, and MISTHA.
Councilmember Spitzley, offset. Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. I have so many. One of the questions that Councilmember Wood asked was about the services, and you had said that you can only guarantee them as long as you're involved in the project, as opposed to through the 40 years. Is there any way to write something into the agreement that says that those services will be provided as part of this since the abatement or the pilot would last that long? I mean, that's.
You know, we can look at that, Councilwoman Dunbar, and see what that would look like. We are going to have an MOU, as I said, with them where they will be paying money to the Lansing Housing Commission, so there is a financial benefit to the Lansing Housing Commission in this deal to support the services over there, to offset some of our costs in providing those services. We can look at the length of the term of that with the developers.
Is the MOU tied to the services alone?
Yes.
Okay, so there is an incentive to continue that MOU to provide those services long-term. Is there a way to codify that?
It would be in the MOU itself.
Okay, but that's, I guess that's what I'm asking, is can we, could we do that to guarantee that there would be services provided there for them for the length of this pilot?
Yeah, we can talk to the developers about that, our development partners, I should say.
Okay. Can we make that a contingency of approval if we need to?
I don't know.
Okay.
I'm not so sure MISTHA would appreciate that. It's better to do it off, I wouldn't even change the ordinance, wouldn't make a conditional, but we'd have to have some assurance, it sounds like, from council.
Yeah, I would say it cannot be done within the pilot, Councilwoman Dunbar. MISTHA does not allow any contingencies in the pilot. In fact, one of your groups that are coming behind you, or is coming behind you because of a contingency in a pilot that MISTHA did not like. So MISTHA wants the pilot to be free and clear, and you can have side agreements as it relates to, for example, Davis Bacon, or in this case, the MOU related to resident services.
Okay. What is the length of time for the MOU that you're considering right now?
We hadn't really talked about years. We just talked about the amounts and what we wanted to be able to do. So we're just, we're still trying to put together the last parts of the deal, and these were some of the last negotiations that we had.
What is the memorandum of understanding for your services? Because I was listening to Councilmember Jackson say that, because that was one of my questions, was of all the other organizations or locations that you have partnerships like Walter French, and you were saying that the Lansing Housing Commission, you know, in that partnership, might receive funding or be responsible for providing services or what have you, but you are not particularly involved the way that you are in this deal?
Well, we are in some of them. It depends. We have agreements with some of the developers that they will allow Lansing Housing Commission to come on property. We're not always getting financially remunerated under an MOU, but we have agreements with them that we can come on and provide services that will have full access to all the residents there and promotion of all of our services. And our resident, you know, service coordinator people that we have hired at Lansing Housing Commission will have access to the residents there.
Okay. So, thank you for clarifying that. Now, with regard to the remuneration that you receive on this project, do you receive that type of remuneration on other projects that you have partnered with? Because we, I keep hearing "we" and "I," and I think that, I mean, that's confusing for us up here to know what part of it is the partnership between the Lansing Housing Commission in this and then your role separate from that.
We get remuneration in a variety of ways. The Stadium North Project, we're getting remuneration as being a partial owner. They were open to us doing that. So we have an agreement with them to provide resident services. That cost is being offset by a small ownership stake instead of an MOU related to resident services. Every developer wants to do it a little bit different. This deal, the way we ended up talking about, you know, getting some financial remuneration back to Lansing Housing Commission was through the memorandum of understanding. But it, the money flows differently depending on the different deals.
Right. But what I was hearing is that you get calls, you get calls from developers?
Yes.
Up to twice a day?
Yes.
And that you are involved in these developments. So I'm speaking specifically to the amount of money that you receive personally as a consultant to this project as opposed to money that's going to the Lansing Housing Commission for the partnership.
Okay. What do you want to know the difference about?
I want to.
How much am I going to get as a part of this deal versus how much Lansing Housing Commission's going to get?
Yeah.
The total on the Lansing Housing Commission, because we did talk about for the full length of the deal, although we've not settled on it, would be, we talked about $10,000 a year times 40 years, which would be about $400,000.
Okay. And then how much do you receive for your part in this partnership?
I think it's $150,000 split between the two of us.
I'm going to go into a realm, I'm going to chew on that for a minute. I'm going to go into the physical logistics of this project. So this is a senior and disabled project, and I also had concerns, and I'm glad that Councilmember Wood brought them up, about the three levels. And I appreciate your description that that was a family and senior complex over at South Washington. But one of the problems that we had there was the conflict happening near the elevator and the issues with security because of the exterior entrances, and so it was limited to a single entrance. We have, what I can see on this drawing is five separate points of entry in downtown Lansing. What will you do for security in those regards? Like, how, and I guess the other thing to go with that is, since this is senior and disabled, there is one single elevator in this entire building, and the building is set up in three wings. So how, I anticipate a lot of congestion for folks that are disabled or senior and have mobility issues trying to use the stairs versus the elevators. Was there any thought to putting in an additional elevator or anything to help with, help with that?
I will make a note of that and talk to the designers.
Okay. When will this come back to us?
The process is the 9th of September?
Okay.
It's got to go to development and planning. Let's go back to DMP and then.
Okay, so I would ask everybody that's on development planning to please, like, follow up on this, because I'm definitely making notes and will follow up on it. I think that it's, it's important to consider the security aspect of having five points of entry downtown and really having a good security system for that and an additional elevator or two. And I know that those are an expense, but.
From a security standpoint, all the doors will be secured with a, you know, a fob of some sort that only the residents can get in. Most of the problem at South Washington was a result of residents letting in people, not the security system. We have added additional security down there and additional cameras to address that need at South Washington and eliminated that problem significantly. But the problem down there was not about the secure doors, it was about residents letting people in when they shouldn't be.
Okay. Okay. Okay, then I would, I would, I would definitely ask for the additional elevator space. And then the final question is the vouchers versus, and then the affordable. What, what do you consider, I don't, I don't know that I saw an amount in here. What is gonna be considered affordable? I know you mentioned the income level that they would serve. But what would, what is, what are the rents that we're, we're talking about?
Fifty-seven of the units, um, of the total units are gonna be either sixty or eighty percent AMI. A one-person making sixty percent AMI in Ingham County today is around thirty-three thousand dollars. A two-person, a couple, would be around forty-four thousand dollars. They would qualify to live there as a senior. Two-person, um, that's one person, two-person at sixty percent, it goes to thirty-seven thousand dollars and it goes up to fifty thousand dollars and eighty percent AMI. We also have some thirty percent units in here as well, which is required by MISTDA to serve the, the very, very low income as well.
Okay, and how much will those units cost? That's what I'm getting, I, I get that...
Oh, you wanna know what the rents are?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know what they are off the top of my head, but we can get them to you, so... The rents are limited by the income as well. MISTDA ties it to thirty percent, so they won't overburden you. So, they have income limits based on, on these numbers as well.
Okay, well, I would, again, I would urge the committee when you guys take this up to, um... Cause I would like to know before we, we vote on this what we anticipate the rents will be. Cause it's, I, I obviously know, I mean, when we talk about overburdened, we're anticipating that rent can be no more than thirty percent of, of income. But if I'm looking at these numbers, I mean, to have rent be thirty percent of however many thousands of dollars that folks make, that's still a high rent for annual rent. So, I was just trying to not have to extrapolate from AMI what, what the possibility for rents will be. Do you think that by the time we bring this back to council in September that we would have an idea what those rents would be?
Yeah, the rents are already published.
Okay. All right. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. Any questions further?
No, okay, well... Very, very quick because I know Councilman Spatafor has a trip to make, but, um, with regards, I, I am really, really obviously keen on the idea of, um, appropriate affordable housing for seniors. We, I mean, we have to do a better job of making sure that our senior population's getting aged in place with grace. That said, I, I still wanna drill down a little bit on the definition of senior. So, we have fifty-five disabled, when you're talking as an example, two bedrooms. If I'm a twenty-five-year-old kid and I have my sixty-five-year-old mother living with me, am I able to move in?
Who's disabled?
I, but because I have the senior, am I able, able to move in, the sixty-five-year-old?
I don't believe so.
My, my point is, I, somebody alluded to the fact during DMP that, and, and, and maybe I, maybe I understood it wrong, but that a senior could move in somebody that is not a senior with them if it's a family member. Is that correct or not?
I don't believe that to be correct, but I will get that verified.
Okay, please do.
Unless they're disabled.
Unless they're disabled.
Yes, so if I'm a senior and I have a disabled, uh, child, you know, even if the child's forty years old-
Sure.
-they can, they can move in as a disabled person.
Okay.
But an able-bodied person, I do not believe can move in.
Okay, before I proceed, go ahead.
But the disabled person can be under fifty-five, right?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, I appreciate that. I wanna make sure I have these numbers right. So, it is, it's estimated based on, um, the investment that property taxes without a pilot would be ninety-six thousand a year, correct? With the pilot, we're looking at twenty-five thousand a year. So, over a forty-year period, we're looking at almost two-point-nine million. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, two-point-nine million. And then I want to, uh, very quickly, uh, because we're looking at a number of pilots today, so this is the last thing I'll say, uh, I promise, is that there, there are some, there's, we always hear these comments how we need more affordable housing in the city of Lansing. I'm, I'm not going to argue that point, but what we have to be very clear on is we need more appropriate affordable housing. And so, I would challenge, um, the folks that are before us today, uh, as you look to carry out your respective missions, the mission of the LHC, um, that you look at potentially acquiring properties that are existing today in some of our, our most vulnerable communities. Because what we're doing is we're adding to. I know that there's this theory, I've never seen it work, um, because we've been approving pilots for a very long time here in the city of Lansing and it has not worked. But there's this theory that, uh, if you build over here and it's appropriate, that's gonna force their hand to actually invest in their properties and that's gonna become appropriate. And that is absolutely not what has happened in the city of Lansing. So, whether you look at Woodside, Summer Place, Waverly Park, Leroy Frowe, with all due respect, South Washington, Stonecrest, I mean, the list goes on and on. I live in these properties. There's very, very little appropriate affordable housing when you're talking about multifamily properties. And, and most came, we have a shiny ball syndrome kinda deal, uh, here in the city of Lansing. Most came with the exact same presentations that we're gonna see today. And unfortunately, um, because folks aren't using their R and Rs correctly, they're not investing in the properties correctly, they're not truly being good stewards of this partnership that they have with the city of Lansing and us bypassing millions and millions and millions of dollars and, and revenues. And, and candidly, you know, I, I'd love to hear, you know, the mayor at some point weigh in. We have a very, very difficult time with the few code officers that we have getting in there, inspecting in a real way to ensure that these people are not being preyed upon by developers, out-of-town developers, management companies, folks that are making a heck of a lot of money, with all due respect, uh, off of these deals, there's a lot of money in poverty. We say that often. And, and then the other piece is we have to also be cognizant of the fact that every study shows that we need more affordable housing in the region. Twenty thousand over twenty years in the tri-county region. And so, we have to do a better job with our municipal partners ensuring, it's a very antiquated model. It's never worked, right, that we're gonna warehouse all the poverty in the city center and, and we're gonna help those people ascend and all that's resulted in is generational poverty. So, we have to do a better job working with our municipal, municipal partners, making sure that, you know, i- if, if I'm poor, I grew up in hood housing. If I'm poor, I might wanna live in East Lansing, I might wanna live in Oakley, I might wanna live in Hazlet, but it's all in Lansing. We depress the, and, and we all know this, we depress the area, median income's so low that all we can get is check cashing and liquor stores and, and so we have to do things differently. So, when I see four pilots in front of us for forty years at four, you know, four percent, it, it makes me nervous, particularly when we're looking at antiquated, three, four, five, threes, that's, to me, that's a high rise when we're talking about housing. Three stories, seniors, five points of access, downtown. And, and with all due res- respect with regards to South Washington, Carol Wood and myself saw it. When you talk about, you know, it was residents doing this and that, there was some of that going on. Some of it was also the fact that you had a senior with a walker going into, right, their home and then five kids waiting for that person to open the door, boom, they're in, right? And, and what happened? Sometimes we had these people kicking in front doors, sometimes we had these people accosting seniors, robbing seniors, uh, so there was a lot of that too. But I just challenge folks to, to think about things differently, maybe do things a little bit differently so we can truly meet the need, um, and truly help people ascend from their circumstances. Thank you.
Well, I, I will respond this way. One, I have changed South Washington because of that concern that you identified. Our resident service program is dedicated to lifting people out of poverty. So, when you say do it a different way, I would make the argument very strongly that that's exactly what Lansing Housing Commission's trying to do right now. We partnered with a group to, uh, start some units in East Lansing on Grand River Avenue over by the Whole Foods. We're a partner in that, in that deal over there. So, in terms of regionalism, we're also working on that as well. So, I agree with you, everything that you said is absolutely correct, but I would also argue that, that that's exactly what we've been doing since my administration started at the Lansing Housing Commission, is to look at it differently and to stop generational poverty and to find ways to move beyond that. And one of the first things that we identified was making an investment through RAD and through the low-income tax credit to first lift people up emotionally that I don't live in a dump and that I live in a really nice housing, uh, you know, building. And then once you lift them up from that perspective, what we've seen, and I've been involved in a lot of development deals, is that people start acting differently. They take care of their homes because they feel like someone else feels that, that I'm worthy and then they feel worthy about their house. You combine that with the resident services that we're providing and I think we have a model to move forward and to change some of the things that you identified. And, you know, the first thing was, I agreed with you. My, my very first inclination when I saw South Washington was whoever ideal that was to put that into a family situation, didn't know what the heck they were doing as, as it relates to management. And most of the things that you identified, Councilman Hussein, are management issues. Affordable housing and market-rate housing are not any different, it's just how they're managed. If you manage crappy market-rate housing, you're gonna have crappy results. If you manage crappy affordable housing, you're gonna have bad results. And so, what this group has to live with is that you're making a long-term arrangement in the groups that you're working with and their ability to manage that property on a long-term basis, under quality standards, that's good for not only the residents, but also good for the neighborhood and for the city, uh, as a whole. And that's a difficult decision. I don't wish that on anybody because really asking you to look into the future for the next forty years and that's hard to do. Alls I can say is that Lansing Housing Commission is a local group, Sam and I are local, he's born and raised in Lansing, I've lived here for thirty years myself, and that we have shown, I think, in the last four years, a dedication to do just that, so... And that's all we, that's all we can say. We can't make promises for forty years, we can just tell you what our, what our history is and what we're attempting to do.
Okay, I think we're good. I, I appreciate the questions from the council members and most of my questions have been answered. Mr. Flannan, Mr. Spatafor, my nearly seven years on the school board, I pushed really hard to get that building sold, developed something like this to happen. So, I'm excited to hear more about the project. I know the committee's got some work to do and some questions that are left unanswered this evening, but I'm very excited to see that crumbling building I've walked through several times and, and had the vision of that could be something great or we're tearing it down kinda, kinda thing. And I'd love to see that preservation happen, particularly in housing for seniors in our community so that they can be part of downtown's forward motion that's been set in place by so many other projects as well. I'll do so and just state for the record, Mr. Spatafor and I do share a last name, but the city attorney has assured me that our, our relationship is, there's no conflict on this setting. So, I just wanted to put that out there on the record for you all, but thank you all for being here this evening.
President Spatafor?
Yeah.
So, a lot of council members had a lot of questions. My suggestion is to send those in an email to Sheri, so we can refer those-
Yes, that's a great idea. If you do have questions-
Yeah, we can refer those in back to those folks so that we can have those answers-
Yep.
-when we do committee.
Yep.
Cause there's a lot of questions.
So, questions that you want answered for committee, please do that so Sheri can get that out to the rest of the folks. Yes?
I said that I was gonna chew on it and I'm still chewing on it and I'm sorry. I gotta, I gotta say this, I am, I'm wondering why this couldn't have been done in your role as the director of the Lansing Housing Commission since it's a partnership with the Lansing Housing Commission. And you just said to me that you guys are gonna be splitting a hundred and fifty thou- I mean, making seventy-five thousand dollars as a side gig to do this, you're making more money on a side gig than you are anybody that can live in that place. And that's, I, I'm concerned about that, that, that that's how this negotiation went down. And I guess if, if you wanna give me something to allay it or just hold it and take it into committee and discuss it in committee, but it is, it's really concerning to me that this is a partnership entered into by the Lansing Housing Commission with the expertise of the Lansing Housing Commission, but the director of the Lansing Housing Commission is making money off the partnership independently of the Lansing Housing Commission.
Well, I came to the Lansing Housing Commission as a development consultant and management consultant. I've never left that role. I am, continue to be a consultant, the agreement with my board of directors is that I am a consultant and that while I work part-time for the Lansing Housing Commission, I also have several other jobs and other development deals that I am actively involved in and have actively involved in. So, this is really no different than the way I've been acting for the last three or four years. It just happens to be a deal in the city of Lansing where a lot of my deals are outside of the city of Lansing.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you.
And our next presentation is the Walter French pilot.
Oh, you're back. Mr. Van Fossen? Welcome back. This project should sound familiar to everyone around this table and I'm sure that we will hear a little bit of why, what brings us together on this issue. So, Mr. Van Fossen, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President and rest of the body, Mayor Shore. I'm Raleigh Van Fossen, the executive director at Capital Area Housing Partnership and joining with me is our project consultant, Mickey Droste. Hopefully, you all remember just about eight, nine months ago, we had this pilot presentation before you where this body, um, did approve a six percent pilot request at twenty years. I just wanna clarify that, a couple of comments were made that all of them tonight are fours at forty. We were a six at twenty and that is not changing. Sadly though, we are coming back after a failed Lytech application to the state housing authority due to our pilot language. Sadly, if this language was the different route that we're hoping to propose tonight, we would've been funded this past July. So, we're eager to get these changes before you and go forward with an October one application. I am just gonna give a couple of highlights of the project mainly for those watching at home, but even a refresher for those, um, here in the audience and the rest of you. The Walter French School came before the housing partnership in December of 2017.
Not to interrupt, uh, Mickey or Raleigh, there is a clicker in front of you that should alert, alert City TV when you wanna advance the slides, so...
I would say click, like...
It takes a minute.
Well, I'll keep talking and I, I click. Oh, there we go. There we go. The Walter French Building came before us in 2017. I'm gonna flip through some of these. After a failed demolition permit request by the prior owner, the city of Lansing mayor at that time in the development office denied the demolition permit to preserve the nationally historic registered building that's there today. After that permit denial, um, the city came to Capital Area Housing Partnership. They saw our recent success with the Old Bailey School in downtown East Lansing and brought us forward to see if we could pursue some sort of renovation to bring some sort of housing and commercial space to the project. So, what we're working on today is a seventy-six unit, one, two, and three bedrooms. We're adding the three bedrooms largely in part of conversations we've had with our resettlement partners at Saint Vinthic- Vincent Catholic Charities and the Refugee Development Center at the lack of quality three-bedroom apartments available. So, you see those incorporated into our site plan. Additionally, within this is the set of site units preserved for those that in MISTDA's terms, they refer to as permanent supportive housing. What's, why that's important is that's qualifying and serving the most vulnerable households in our community and adults. Those are folks who are either street homeless today, may have suffered from some sort of mental health disability and require a level of support surface, services beyond what your traditional property management company would offer or even your ownership. And so, for this project, that means we've partnered with the local Ingham County Continuum of Care. That includes identifying, um, CMH, Community Mental Health, Avant House Ministries. I'm trying to flip through the partnerships, as well as Holy Cross Services to deliver those onsite services specific to those PSH units. And that's more of a hand-holding than you would get from an office manager. That's somebody who's physically visiting with those residents on a weekly basis, working through those life skills that those units and those residents may need. Additional partnerships include partnering with this city and the development office and investing some of our CDBG dollars that we as a community receive in order to make this project whole, as well as partnering with the Lansing Board Water and Light to do a pilot onsite generation for the energy production that this building would qualify for. I'm gonna pass the mic though to Mickey, she's gonna explain specifically the pilot language changes that's being brought before and then certainly would take any questions.
Thank you, Raleigh. Good evening all. I, I just wanted to give a really quick what's different about the pilot that we're asking for in language today versus what was executed, um, in December. And the first and foremost, MISTDA objected to, um, a non-related default language that was put into the first one, or in words that were talked about earlier tonight, conditions in the pilot. They don't want pilots that have conditions in them so that if for any reason other than the language in the pilot that has to do with payment, something happens, the pilot then goes into default. So, we had to remove the default language that was in there. Two other things that happened is MISTDA reviewed it and asked us to further clarify the definition of the mortgage financing that says what mortgage and financing allows for pilots or requires pilots. So, that was modified and I believe Mr. Abud asked for the increased language around construction start date so it wasn't just kind of lingering out there. So, our pilot now states that construction must begin within a two-year period of time in order for the pilot to remain in effect.
I'll just add that MISTDA's legal has-
Could you repeat the last thing that you said? I heard someone didn't hear that.
Yeah, the, the pilot now requires that, um, construction begin within a two-year period of time of the ordinance execution.
And then I was just gonna close out by saying, um, because this was the area of the application that did not get points, which did not allow the project to proceed forward, and we have received approval, I think, from the city attorney's office that this language meets the city's definition of requirement as well as the state housing authority. So, hopefully with the passage of this pilot, we will be on our way to the October one application and not see MISTDA poke at this again. I tried to give a brief overview, but I can go back to any of the slides.
Any questions from council? I think you answered most of our questions in December, so I appreciate you for coming down. This will go back to DMP and then come back to us on the thirteenth of September.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is the Cedar Place pilot.
If you could please introduce yourselves. I think the clicker's there, if you need that this evening.
Sure.
Welcome to the Lansing City Council.
Thank you for having us. I'm Scott Fry. I'm-
Sorry to interrupt. We are having trouble hearing, so if you could pull the mics closer when you're speaking, we appreciate it.
Is that better?
That's much better, thank you.
Thanks. I'm Scott Fry. I represent Jonathan Rose Companies, and I have with me Kevin McKee, who's the president of our management company, Rose Community Management. First, I'd like to thank the Development Planning Committee for the time that they've given to this project, and it's my pleasure to be here before the council tonight. Jonathan Rose Companies is a mission-driven owner and developer who is focused on the creation and preservation of affordable housing, including Cedar Place, one of our sixteen Michigan properties. Cedar was developed in nineteen seventy-four under Section 236, which created affordability by restricting rents and providing an interest rate subsidy to the owners. Prior ownership opted out of Section 236, and Cedar Place became unrestricted, operating as a naturally occurring affordable housing property until 2019, when Rose succeeded in bringing ninety-four units of project-based Section Eight to Cedar Place, through the complex transfer and combination of two HAP contracts through a Section Eight BB transfer from a property in Rochester Hills, where the owners were opting out of the Section Eight program and taking their property to market rate. This action preserved ninety-four units of affordable housing in Michigan and brought it to Lansing. The process took two years and cost over three hundred thousand dollars in legal and consulting fees, and necessitated over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in improvements required by HUD, including new cabinets-
Sir, sorry to interrupt again. Your, your tone is a bit too dulcet. If you could speak up just a little bit, we're having trouble hearing folks up here.
Sure.
Thank you.
Our action in bringing the ninety-four units of affordable housing to Lansing took two years, cost over three hundred thousand dollars in legal and consulting fees, and necessitated over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in improvements required by HUD, which included new cabinets, countertops, and vanities in fifty-nine units, as well as tens of thousands more and other improvements required as a condition for approval of the transfer request. We request that the council advance our proposal for a four percent pilot at Cedar Place, contingent upon Rose receiving an allocation of tax credits, which will allow us to compete, complete the next phase of the preservation effort at Cedar Place, which would be a coordinated renovation of the property. In completing the proposed renovation, Rose would restrict all or as many of the units as possible at sixty percent of AMI and below, without displacing any of the existing residents. Most importantly, the transaction would create an additional one hundred and twenty-six units of deed-restricted affordable housing in Lansing, where half of renters are considered overburdened, paying in excess of thirty percent of their incomes in rent, and also bring the property up to the strict standards upheld by Rose Companies, and deliver an appealing product that our residents and the entire city of Lansing can take pride in. The pilot is essential for two reasons. First, it is part of Mishna's QAP scoring table. The competitive nine percent Lytec program awards points for projects with tax exemptions, which shows community support and the community's desire to leverage our investment in the city's affordable housing stock. Our project will need these points to be competitive with the other applicants in the state. Secondly, the reduction in operating expenses will allow us to increase loan proceeds, which translates into additional funds available for renovation. If awarded an allocation of nine percent tax credits, affordability would be guaranteed for at least forty-five years. Rose has been a good steward of Cedar Place since taking control in 2017 and beginning to plan for its redevelopment. The owners have contributed in excess of one point five million dollars to fund the HAP transfer, unit upgrades, capital repairs, and operating cash shortfalls. Most recently, ownership funded the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar replacement of the building's chiller without hesitation, when it would not hold pressure upon startup this spring. The property has many other capital needs, and a tax credit renovation is key to accomplishing the goal of securing this essential housing in the city of Lansing. We have valued the opportunity to speak with several council members prior to today's meeting. We have listened carefully to your feedback, and we are committed to working in partnership with you to ensure that this project delivers the most value to the city of Lansing and to the residents of Cedar Place. Thank you for your time and consideration, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Good, okay. I see hands from Councilmember Dunbar, and Wood?
Thank you for that presentation. I heard you say that you are going to keep all of the residents that are there, and you're going to be moving toward dedicating sixty percent AMI and below for some of the units. I received a couple of communications from folks who live there currently, who received announcements, I don't know if that was email, mail, slipped under the door, what, that their rent was going up twenty-five percent starting January first.
That's, were these-
The rent, I can, I can tell you. It went, said the current rent is five fifty-nine, and that starting on January first, it's going up to seven oh three. So subtracting the two and dividing, it's twenty-five percent difference. Can you speak to that? Because, I mean, obviously, we're doing this to keep the, we want it to be affordable, and we want it to, folks to stay there, and we certainly don't want to displace the folks that are there. But it's hard to swallow, like, I know that you want capital to do the improvements, but if there's already been a plan to raise the rents on the folks that are there, I mean, we've got to consider that, too.
So our, our- Our HAP contract, as all HAP contracts do, receives an OCAF annually, which is a small adjustment to rents, to keep up with increased operating expenses. The HAP contract rents were increased to seven hundred and three dollars, and I just think it's important to point out that a new sixty percent AMI unit in Ingham County would rent for eight hundred and ninety dollars. So our, our rents are, even today, are even more affordable than a sixty percent AMI unit would be.
Just, just to follow up on that, ma'am, is the, on that HAP contract, the thirty percent of adjusted gross income rents that the residents are paying will not change. They'll pay thirty percent. The HAP contract amounts that are paid with us and HUD, that contracted amount, does not impact their rent. We have to provide that to them because of the changes in the contract, but that's not going to impact their specific rental payment every month.
So-
It's only based on their income.
So are you saying that the, help me understand that. So is her rent not changing, or is it changing at a smaller amount?
Correct. So they're, they would still maintain the thirty percent of adjusted gross income rent, that's based on their income. So that will not change.
Okay.
HUD is, is just increasing our overall rent contract, so that, that comes into place every, every five or so years, as we, as we get those rent adjustments from the, from HUD.
Okay.
But the individual, so this usually-
So she makes less than a certain amount, and her thirty percent is less than that seven oh three, her rent would be whatever that-
If she paid five hundred dollars and there's been no change to her income, she'd pay five hundred dollars on January first. There'd be no change.
Okay. I think, I would suggest, since we've gotten the calls-
Yep.
Because I think maybe people are confused or, and they're scared, because they don't, I mean, especially those who have lived there for any length of time-
Yep.
-the idea of having to move out because of that drastic, an increase in their rent. Maybe you could do some type of outreach or-
Absolutely.
... a recommunication to clarify that, because I know that I had let her know, as soon as I heard that you guys were on the agenda, that I was going to ask this question, and I wanted to get back with her. But rather than me mistranslate, I would, I would like to be able to follow up with her. So could you give me a timeframe in which you would do that outreach, so that I can, I'll tell her, let's talk after you guys hear from management again?
Yeah, we should be able to get that out this week.
Okay.
So we'll move quickly on that, and we can provide a copy to you of what we sent out, so you have a, you understand what we sent, and what we're trying to communicate, and we'll definitely clarify that.
That's great.
And if they, if they have additional questions, we'd be happy to take that in the office, if they're comfortable there or over the phone, just to make sure. We obviously don't want to create an environment where they're uncertain about their future, so we'll make-
That's a good word.
-a corrective action there.
Yeah. Thank you for that.
Yep.
Y'all set, Councilmember Dunbar?
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood?
Thank you. How long have you owned this particular property?
Rose Companies has been the general partner in Cedar Place since 2017.
2017. So between 2017 and today, how much have you invested?
Over one point five million dollars.
And how much of that was needed repair versus upgrade?
The upgrades that we-
Such as the boiler going out, such as, you know, I mean, where you had to make the repair versus the fact that you went in there and upgraded the unit because somebody left.
So to bring the HAP contract over, we upgraded fifty-nine units at a cost of roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The remaining money was spent to, to keep up with the capital needs of the project, to keep it running, chillers, and other mechanical issues.
And when you purchased this property, did it have a pilot?
No, it did not.
So you are currently, do not have a pilot on this?
Correct.
Can I ask you, when you're looking at a nine percent versus a ten percent, why are, why the difference? Or am I wrong that you're not asking for a nine?
We are asking for four.
For four?
We're applying in Mishna's nine percent tax credit round, which has an application date of October first.
Obviously, I misunderstood when you said that. And this building is not predominantly senior, is that correct?
I believe that it, so it's not restricted formally as a senior building, but I believe that we have a large contingent of senior, senior residents, and a lot of that is just a factor of the income limits on the HAP contract and holdovers from the Section 236 days.
So your pilot won't restrict it to seniors, is that what I'm hearing?
The pilot would not place an age restriction on the building.
All right, thank you. And then, and Jim, for, for a legal question, and that is, in talking about some of the side agreements, what is the enforceability of having side agreements? Or Joe, I don't care which one of you answered.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. We have a, we have a direction from the administration that we want prevailing wage Davis Bacon agreements, and so we enter into a side agreement with the developers for the, excuse me, for the prevailing wage Davis Bacon language, and we can enforce that. That's a separate agreement. Excuse me, it's just like a contract, and it's enforceable on its own terms.
But it would not, if I'm correct in remembering with HUD, it won't allow us to withdraw the pilot?
Actually, the pilot, the mortgage is a separate agreement with the developer, but the pilot, the council can always, it's an ordinance.
Okay.
So if they do not, if they do not follow the agreement, we can repeal the ordinance.
Okay, that's the first, I, you know, because I've heard before that we couldn't do that. So you're, you believe we can?
This is an agreement that's enforceable between the city and the developers.
The, the ordinance, the pilot?
The, the Davis Bacon side agreement that we have.
Correct.
That's correct.
But you just said that the ordinance could be repealed.
Yes, we can repeal. It's, the city's ordinance, so it can be repealed. If they, if they do not follow, do not pay the, the different, the rents, don't comply with, don't commence within two years, any of those things can result in the termination of this ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe I should clarify that Kirk, a prior statement had to do with putting conditions in the ordinance itself. Okay, all right.
I have Councilmember Spitzley, then Dunbar.
Thank you, Mr. President. That last statement was kind of incredible, because if that was the case, I'd have moved to yank the Porter's pilot a long time ago. But I thought that we were not able to do that, and so that, that right there, that was, that was something new. Because I, I would have moved to repeal that, that pilot, the Porter, a long time ago. I have a question. So you talked about expending three hundred thousand dollars to move, was it to move the ninety-four Section Eight units into Lansing?
That's correct. We took two HAP contracts from two projects that were called North Ridge and Rochester Hills, and combined them and, and brought them to Cedar Place and installed the, the budget authority under the, that combination of two HAP contracts, was enough to, to add ninety-four units at Cedar Place.
I appreciate that. Is that part of the one point five million you mentioned to Councilmember Wood as investments?
It was.
Okay. What about, so the demographics of the building, you have seniors, families, single in the building at this point? And, and, and full disclosure, and you know, we've talked about this, is that we, we are hearing that there is some friction with those demographics in the buildings. And, and, and we, I had asked you, was it feasible to put the demographics on different floors, so they wouldn't interact? And we, we understood that that probably wasn't feasible. So I'm just, I'm just kind of throwing it out, that we have, we have had some concerns about that, because you have that mixture there.
And that's why I promised to bring Mr. McKee, who could expound on some of our policies.
Okay.
So just, so just generally speaking, there's, there's no restrictions in terms of age or composition, so we have a wide variety of resident types at the property. So I think that's just based on who applies, and then who qualifies.
All right, thank you. And then my final question for legal is, I get the, the side agreement for prevailing wage, but I'm going to ask again, because I think I've asked before, do we have the capability to enter into side agreements for other issues besides the two-year limitation to startup and some other things? And so if, if there is a management issue, for example, or, you know, multiple code enforcement issues, for example, legally, does council, I mean, you know, and, and we move to repeal an ordinance because of those things?
All right, I have to clarify, not clarify, just amplify what was said before. You just can't repeal the ordinance. There has to be a breach of the contract.
Okay.
And then in the breach of the contract, there has to be a language that says basically a default, what does the current language say now, Joe? Like prevailing wage or things of that nature, and then that would, could trigger repeal. So it's not just-
So we could, and I appreciate that. So we, so there is the opportunity then to enter into side contracts that list certain things that the city of Lansing would expect them to do, and if they do not fulfill those contracts-
Yeah.
-then we could move to repeal- then we could move to repeal the ordinance?
Is it in the, yeah, go ahead, Joe. Just like the prevailing wage, the Davis Bacon language that we do, if there was another side agreement that was within the law, a legal side agreement that we could pursue with the developer, that's something that we could also enter into a side agreement on, depending upon what it was.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Following that is Councilmember Dunbar, anyone else with questions? Councilmember Dunbar?
There's just a quick question on the tenancy there. How much turnover do you have, and is most of it carried over, over the years? Because I've, the people I've talked with have lived there for many, many years. So, is that what you're seeing, or do you have a certain percentage of turnover each year that might be changing the makeup of it more from senior to families?
Yeah.
So, the residents that have aged in place tend to stay, so do you have some turnover annually on those units as well? But we have, you know, roughly 30% to 40% annual turnover. That's mostly comprised of our market rate units.
Okay.
So, we see most of it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you for being here this evening. We will be back at committee once the next committee of DMP, next week. We'll be in touch with scheduling, yeah, next Wednesday. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Clerk?
Okay, our next presentation is the Porter Senior Apartments.
Good evening.
Good evening. If you could please introduce yourselves for the council, and then the floor is yours, and the clicker works for you, just like the rest of the folks. So, just press, press it when they're ready to advance your slide.
Perfect. Thank you so much. My name is Felipe Serpa. I'm here on behalf of Redwood Housing. Thank you so much.
Sorry to interrupt, we are having trouble up here with the sound projects in the audience. If you could pull the mic closer to your face, please?
Is this good?
That's perfect, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Councilmembers, Mr. Mayor, thank you for having us. My name is Felipe Serpa. I'm here on behalf of Redwood Housing, and I'm here to discuss a proposal for 4% pilot at the Porter. With me, I have Jill Esses. She is the regional manager for KMG Prestige, which is the new property management company that we have hired and is currently managing the property. So, I want to talk briefly about Redwood Housing. We are new in town. I want to talk about what we plan to do with the substantial rehabilitation of a, you know, critical community asset that has historic significance to the city of Lansing. And I want to talk about the partnership that we're hoping to foster with the city, particularly with the council, in order to, you know, benefit our residents and benefit the community at large. So, with that, let's dive right in. Ownership overview. Redwood Housing, we are affordable housing developers, of course, and we are focused on raising the standard of living for low-income seniors and families. We are dedicated to preserving and meaningfully improving the current stock of affordable housing. And how, what we do this, how we do this is through the acquisition and the substantial rehabilitation of, of existing properties. So, we're all about preservation. We firmly believe, and we, and we see this across the country, that rehabilitation not only improves the living condition of a residence with its paramount, of course, but it also helps strengthen surrounding communities. And to do so, to support our mission, oh, thank you very much. Support our mission, you know, we assemble teams of passionate advocates in the affordable housing space with deep, deep knowledge of, of the types of, of properties that we, that we steward. We've had great success working alongside governments, nonprofits, some of which we'll be happy to put you all in touch with. And to date, we are stewards of roughly greater than 20,000 units across 15 states, and that includes Michigan. Next slide. Management overview. So, you know, the Porter, everybody here is familiar with the Porter, of course. So, one of the things that, you know, we, we really wanted to do was hit the ground running. Complete change, change of ownership, change of management. We, we wanted it to be impactful right out of the gate. So, what we did was partner with KMG Prestige. They are local, and I actually mentioned in the Walter French, I believe, that were on one of those slides, but they are local to Michigan. Their headquarters are at Mount Pleasant. They have a 37-year track record of success here in the Midwest. They currently manage over 25,000 apartments, including six properties here in Lansing that are affordable, as well as market rate community directly across the street. This is a new development, the Metro, that's directly across the street from us. But KMG's, you know, bread and butter, really, and Jill can speak more towards that, is HUD and Lytech regulated properties, which is what the Porter is. HUD right now, Lytech here in the near future. One of the things that we're super excited about KMG's involvement is on the service coordinator front. The property currently benefits from a service coordinator grant. We have a service coordinator on site. And KMG is a leader in this space. They have a dedicated quality assurance arm in-house, run by a woman named Kelly Green, who I'm very fond of. And what her group does essentially is provide targeted oversight and guidance to both properties that KMG manages, but as well as a third-party service to other, other properties that benefit from a service coordinator grant. Every QA provider in the program has a master's degree in service-related fields and have no less than three years' experience participating in a service coordinator program. So, I will, if you don't mind, I'll get through the presentation. Maybe you can direct some questions to Jill on this front. So, next slide here. What have we done since we took stewardship of the Porter? You know, in, in the short period that we've, that we've been stewards of the Porter since May 2021, with KMG's leadership, we've been able to implement a good amount, a great amount, I would say, of corrective measures to what was a, frankly, poorly managed property. We obviously conducted 100% unit inspection and corrected health and safety deficiencies as we saw them. We hired a new pest control company, who is a, is a partner of KMG's across the state. And we've contractually, we've entered into a contract that is robust and is frankly required to abate what has been a long, longstanding issue at, at the Porter. We've obviously implemented daily interior and exterior cleanings. We repaired the entry system, which was obviously a security concern. We purchased new laundry equipment. And we're in the process of expanding the services available to, to our residents through the service coordinator program. As, as, part of that as well is communication. I've personally taken part in two resident-wide meetings where I introduced myself as ownership, introduced KMG. I believe Jill's boss was there, David Sewell, who is Vice President. And we really took the time to, you know, engage with tenants, explain to them what our mission was, explain to them what the, the following months are going to entail, and what the proposed renovation is going to entail. You know, and obviously, going forward, this is something we're going to continue. KMG continues to have regular and open dialogue with all our residents, and we're ensuring that their needs are met. So, you know, we're very happy with KMG. As a matter of fact, we're partnering with them across the country, across the Midwest, and they're, they're a fantastic property manager that we're very excited about. Jill can talk a little bit about the service coordinator piece and what we're going to be doing there in the near future. So, let's talk a little bit about the property itself. This, obviously, is a building that everybody is well acquainted with, as we know. The Porter was originally built in 1918, located within the Lansing Downtown Historic District. As a matter of fact, we'll be implementing, using rather historical tax credit equity, as well as low-income housing tax credit equity. And, you know, prior to being senior affordable housing, the Porter operated as a hotel and market rate apartments. You know, while rich in history, the Porter has unfortunately been neglected and is in need of extensive, extensive repairs, which we will talk about. Our proposed renovation is comprehensive. It's a historically-driven renovation. It will feature both interior and exterior upgrades. It will feature community space upgrades, and of course, the apartments themselves will, will receive upgrades. And they will receive new mechanical and HVAC equipment, which we will get into as well. One of the things that we're really proud of is, is the overwhelming support that we receive from our residents. As a matter of fact, I have here a letter of support signed by an overwhelming majority of our residents, which I can submit for the record, should that be required. But residents are excited, that's the bottom line. I think that they've endured a lot over the past decade, I suppose, or even longer, perhaps. And I think they're really seeing a change. Jill will definitely speak more towards that. So, why a 4% pilot? The incremental investment that we can make is really going to be made possible with the support of the city council. That's why we talk about partnerships with, with municipalities. A 4% pilot is going to afford a fantastic renovation, which I'll get into here in a minute. So, let's move towards that with our renovation overview. So, like I mentioned, this is a comprehensive historic restoration slash renovation. It is going to create high, high-quality affordable housing that's, that frankly has been neglected for some time. We're going to have a historically-compatible envelope restoration. This includes facade repairs, it will include a new roof. Most importantly, I believe, is the elimination of what is an antiquated and frankly failing municipal steam heating system. We are going to be introducing new central heating and cooling, which we're very excited about, and I know that the residents are as well. And we'll also have further MEP upgrades, mechanical, electrical plumbing upgrades, full elevator modernization, complete kitchen, bathroom upgrades in the units, modernization of the community amenities, and upgrades to all common areas. Again, I'll get into the particulars here in a minute. And then importantly as well, accessibility and life safety upgrades. We're going to expect a reduction in the energy consumption and the carbon output of the property, given our move off of the municipal steam system, which we're excited about as well. And one of the things that I do want to emphasize here on, on the rehabilitation itself is, is the expected impact on the local labor force. So, we have a handful of commitments here that we're, that we'll be making through MISTDA or otherwise, and in, obviously in partnership with Paragon Construction Company, which is a general contractor on this project. We will be providing local labor, competitive wages, benefits, and 401K plans, to name a few items on the world of benefits. We estimate at this juncture to be using about 80% of the full labor force will be local. In speaking with our general contractor, the subcontractors that have been engaged, we'll be paying competitive wages, like I mentioned. I think it was mentioned previously that this is an extremely competitive construction market today, nationally, really. This is obviously a matter of principle as well. We are estimating between $25 and $45 an hour for the, the workers on site. And obviously, this is dependent on the trade and on the tenure. And I think it's important to compare this to what was mentioned before, Davis Bacon, for example. I pulled some stats off of samhs.gov, which is the federal repository for this type of information. For Ingham County in 2021, what I found was anywhere between $13 an hour to $48 an hour, on the low end being a truck driver, for example, on the high end being a certified electrician. So, we really feel like the commitment that we're making is right there with where the labor market is and where competitive wages need to be. Additionally, through MISTDA, we will be entering into an equal employment opportunity plan. This essentially outlines our commitment to hiring from minority-approved sublists that are provided by MISTDA, as well as the Michigan Supplier Development Council, so not only subcontractors, but suppliers of materials as well. And then additionally to that, we are committing to a Section 3 renovation. Section 3 is a race and gender-neutral regulation, but it does, it does work towards the hiring of, of low-income individuals. So, we're committing at least 10% of the dollar value of the prime contract to be awarded to qualified subs who will employ low-income individuals. Let me move to my next slide. So, some particulars and details here. So, what we have here is a general architectural floor plan. This is the ground floor, and this is just an architectural page. But what I, what I wanted to do was kind of, you know, hit some, hit some specifics. So, we will be doing new paint, new flooring, accessibility compliance upgrades. For example, in the laundry room, we need to adjust the height of a countertop, which doesn't seem like a big deal, but it is if you're in a wheelchair. Like I mentioned, all new appliances, LED, high-efficiency lighting, new ceiling fans, switches, outlets, new ceiling tiles. And this goes for the hallways as well, of course. New exit signs, new switches and outlets, a new drinking fountain, drywall repairs, new fire extinguishers. And then, what I'm most excited about, and I'm not an engineer, but, but this kind of, it really, really piques my interest, the mechanical equipment. So, what we're looking at here is a mechanical drawing of the new hydraulic piping that's going to, that's going to power the hybrid pump system that will introduce cooling to the building for the first time, and, at least central cooling, and, and keep the heating as well. So, the steam system. Steam system has been causing issues across the board, as far as we understand it. It's an antiquated system that is on the verge of failure. Every time they switch over to heat, there, it just pops, and there's leaks all over the place. It's also a great point of entry for rodents, I've been told. So, we're very excited about being able to essentially abandon the system in place by cutting and capping and moving to a central hybrid heat pump system. I think it's really important to highlight a couple of things on this front, which I can also get into in more detail. But the building is currently, does not have central cooling. At this juncture, if you're a tenant in the building and you want air conditioning in your unit, you have a, a window unit. And the electricity that, that window unit draws is the only utility that you, as a tenant, are charged with paying. This will remain the case. This will remain the case. Tenants will remain, will only have the electrical bills to pay directly. And our engineers have done some back-of-the-envelope analysis that basically states that the apples-to-apples comparison between the proposed system and the window units, the electrical draw is, if not the same, a little bit less with the central cooling that we're going to be introducing. And again, it's an on-demand system. So, if you'd like to save a couple of shuckles and not turn on cooling at all times of the day, you'll, that will remain an option. So, let's move to the next slide. This is a, a roof plan, again highlighting some of the mechanical equipment. We'll have a new dry fluid cooler on the roof, low-profile, replaces the existing cooling tower. It's extremely efficient, requires less maintenance, and then it also mitigates the possibility of contaminants. Your traditional cooling tower has an open water source, so this is a great mitigant to potential risk there. And we'll move on to the next slide. The other thing I want to talk about and not to lose sight of is the current site plan. This is not only going to be a renovation of the building itself, but it's also going to include work on the site, primarily in the parking lot. I believe there's about 54 spaces, if my memory corrects me, excuse me, if my memory is correct. We will be restriping, sealing, and replacing signage. We will be introducing landscaping improvements, tree trimming and such. There will be accessibility path of travel improvements. We're actually going to redo the ramp that the previous owners put into place, which apparently is not compliant, which is not accessibility, accessible. It's not ADA compliant, so that's a piece of work that we're going to have to do as well. We'll repair concrete trip hazards. We will install solar parking light poles, which again is, goes towards the, you know, efficiency piece of the equation here. And we will also be replacing the backup generator that's on site. of the equation here, and we will also be replacing the backup generator that's onsite. And now a beautiful rendering. So, I think that this is, I really got a kick of the architecture piece. The architecture piece is something that really, really piques my interest. I think that this is a beautiful building that represents fantastic architecture, and I'm very thrilled to be able to be part of a project that's going to really restore the historic nature of this building in downtown Lansing. It will include masonry restorations, tuck pointing, patching of damaged areas, the cleaning and the restoration of the beautiful limestone. We're going to be replacing some missing pieces of the metal cornice at the top of the building, which is rusting and disrepair, and then obviously low-pressure washing the exterior, resealing all of those windows, cleaning all the windows, and obviously painting metal railings and light poles. So, now to the numbers. Why a 4% pilot? That was something that was brought up during the development and planning subcommittee. We've done extensive analysis on what is feasible and what is not feasible, and you have some numbers here in front of you that I'll touch on at a high level, and then I'll get a little bit into why these numbers shake out the way that they do. With your support, with the city council's support, Redwood and our affiliates are committed to investing north of $70,000 per unit into this critical, critical community asset. This translates to roughly $7 million of hard costs, meaning direct construction costs. And if we were to pursue a 10% pilot, which is pro forma, our analysis indicates that we would be able to do a fraction of that, roughly $25,000 per door, $2 million and a half dollars in hard costs. What that really translates to is almost a 3X amount increase in investment that we're putting directly back into this critical community asset, almost two times the amount of dollars in the units themselves, where the residents will obviously get the most use in their homes. Without the 4% pilot, we'll be basically entering into a repair program. HVAC repairs, we would be forced to maintain the steam system and continue to repair the system. There wouldn't really be a historically significant restoration, and it would really just become upgrades, just a roof replacement. So why is this the case? I think that's a valid and great question that was asked previously at the Development and Planning Committee. Everything here is kind of like a circular loop. Like was alluded to previously, that debt service coverage is a key metric that dictates the amount of dollars by way of construction loans that are eligible for these projects. The costs associated with not, the operating costs associated with not pursuing this full rehabilitation will basically end up costing us more in insurance, obviously more in repair and maintenance. We would remain high on the utilities front. One of the things that I didn't mention, but I should hear, the overall utility costs that are going to be, the utility savings come out to roughly $47,000 a year. That's our back-of-the-envelope numbers when it comes to getting off of the municipal steam. And it's important to note that the pilot is based on sheltered rents net of utility. Obviously, the reserves go up, and then obviously our tax line item goes up. What that essentially does is lowers the amount of dollars that we can invest directly into the rehabilitation. The development itself is contingent on the participation of not only the City of Lansing in force, but also the federal government. This is a Section 8 property. All 98 senior apartments are covered by the HAB contract, and the rehab that we're undertaking will go in under what's called a markup to market. Essentially, we tell HUD we're going to perform this fantastic renovation, and HUD increases the subsidy. The discussion about the increase in rent with the previous percenter applies here. There will be an increase in subsidy, which allows for obviously higher net income, but there will not be an increase in the amount of dollars out of pocket that our residents will incur. Without the rehab, without the comprehensive rehab, we will not get the markup to market from HUD. This is all interconnected. It's federal level with HUD, it's state level with MISTDA through the issuance of bonds and credits, and obviously it's local with the support of Lansing. So this is all really working together. The other thing I really wanted to point out here is that with this markup to market, there will still be an increase in the tax base that currently goes in to the city's coffers currently. We project a $51,000 a year average across 15 years by way of tax revenue to the city, which represents two times what the current tax bill is for the pilot that's in place. Roughly $25,000 were paid for the summer of 2021. And across the 15 years, this translates to roughly $770,000 of tax revenue to the City of Lansing. I'm sure I'll get a lot of questions on that. I'm happy to be here and discuss this. So, we will move on to the next slide. We talked a little bit about this previously, but what you see here on this slide is the overwhelming tenant support that we've garnered, frankly due to the really, the change of attitude and the change of pace that KMG has brought to the table, and you know, the comprehensive rehabilitation that everybody is looking forward to. We have overwhelming support from our tenant base by way of signing this letter to you all, and tenants are obviously seeing improvements already. We really feel strongly about that. The pest control issue comes to mind, obviously, but I think management is really the first line of, I won't call it the first line of defense, but a good management team is first in line to address tenant concerns, and we're very proud to be partnered with KMG. So, I will talk a little bit about why we feel that a comprehensive rehab not only benefits the residents, of course, but also the wider community. So I have some stats here, and I'd be happy to provide you with the source material. One, properties with dedicated resident service programs like the Porter are associated with a 50% lower rate of police and emergency and non-emergency calls. And I'd just like to mention and give my condolences to Councilmember Wood, who was mentioned, I believe it was nephew Rick was mentioned to be an EMS. Support of housing is also correlated with an 18% reduction in emergency room visits. Municipalities benefit from the redevelopment of affordable housing as the activity leads to further community investment and appreciating values. And cities and states also benefit financially from employment and construction activities, which we discussed earlier. So just to emphasize, the Porter is now offering enhanced resident services, will continue to, and with your support, with the city council's support by way of 4% pilot, the comprehensive renovation that we're so happy and proud to be undertaking will provide lasting dividends, not only for the project residents, but for the City of Lansing as a whole. I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we're really good at this. This is really our bread and butter, historic renovations. So I wanted to briefly talk about a case study in Washington State, in Tacoma, the Winthrop. This is a really analogous project to the Porter. It was built in 1925 as a luxury hotel, and was converted to affordable housing circa 1972, roughly double the size, 200 families call it home, 175 of those families are supported by Section 8 assistance. And since its conversion to affordable housing, the project has been starved of capital investment, and frankly was on the verge of failure before Redwood stepped in, which again is analogous to the Porter. There was an extensive renovation and development plan to preserve and revitalize the property, much to the disappointment of developers who were circling it, trying to convert it to market-rate housing. It's a beautiful building in a really cool part of Washington State adjacent to Seattle. The exhaustive rehab included a renovation budget of more than $150,000 per unit, and it resulted in the preservation of yet another critical community asset. And it was analogous in the sense of what was in need of replacing. Envelope, roofs, windows, elevators, plumbing systems, the mechanical systems. It also had a seismic retrofit that was required, as well as the upgrading and the modernization of the common areas in the apartments. So it's something that we're really proud of, and something that we frankly do, and we're very excited to be able to bring that sort of expertise to the City of Lansing. We'd be more than happy to put you all in front with the City of Tacoma, the executive director of the Tacoma Housing Authority, and/or anybody else that you'd like to speak to about us, obviously. And lastly, we just can flip through this quickly because I've been rambling for a while here, and I'd love to answer some questions. What do we do here? Again, analogous to the Porter, extensive mechanical system upgrades, as you see by the before-and-after pictures here, similar historic details that as the Porter, there was a building envelope, had been significantly compromised. Certain areas of the project had been condemned, in fact, prior to the comprehensive renovation that we undertook. And you see here, the facade and the windows throughout the project were essentially beyond their useful lives, and it was causing water infiltration into the building. We installed energy-efficient and historically compatible windows in this case. Here's before and after of the entrance. New roof, in the same way that we will be doing at the Porter. Some more historical details, some of the railing there was in really poor condition and structure unsafe, we obviously addressed that. And then here's some shots of the interior. Here's the interior hallway, and you can see the specifications that we choose are market-rate adjacent. You know, one of the things that I love to say is that our rehabs are places that I would myself be proud to live in, and I mean that sincerely. Laundry equipment, again analogous to the Porter, and here's a before-and-after shot of one of the units itself. And then last but not least, the constant leaks from the plumbing, which again is analogous to the steam system here, was really causing damage to the common areas. So we included a historically significant rehab of the crystal ballroom with historical relics, and this currently serves the broader community, so I think that's fantastic. And with that, I would be happy to entertain questions, both myself and Joe here.
Thank you very much for a very thorough presentation. I do have a few folks that have identified that they have questions already. Councilmember Spitzley, you're up first, followed by Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, Mr. President. So you guys still, you have a current pilot right now, is that correct?
That is correct.
And how much is that?
It is also a 4% pilot.
And how much time left do you have on that?
I believe it runs to 22.
Till 2022, is that what you said?
Correct, yes. I can get you the exact details on that, but that's my recollection, yes.
How long have you owned the property?
We purchased the property in May of this year.
Okay. Are you still requiring your tenants to pay for window air conditioning units?
Are we still requiring to pay our tenants for?
No, no. Are you still requiring tenants to pay for air conditioning units?
The physical units themselves?
Yes, that is correct.
Is that, I'm not sure, but Joe can answer.
As of this point, residents have their own air conditioning units. Nobody's come to us and asked us to buy one for them. As we came into the hot heat of the summer, residents came down and requested us to install their air conditioning units they already had, that were in their closet.
So there are tenants right now that do not have air conditioning in their units?
I believe so.
Okay. My final question is, what investments have you made to the property since you owned it?
Absolutely. We talked a little bit about this, and Joe can elaborate. Number one, we implemented a robust and far beyond what was being done by way of pest control mitigation. So that, I believe it's twice a week now, I believe our bedbug plan before only included the actual units that were reporting bedbugs. Now we're actually addressing the adjacent units on both sides of those apartments. We replaced the laundry equipment. We fixed the entry system, which had been in disrepair for quite some time, we were told. And what else, I mean, we've done, what else have we done, anything else you would point to?
We have fixed the hot water heater. The hot water heater was in disrepair, and that is now fixed, where the residents have hot water on a regular basis.
I think that's a good list there. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatterford. First of all, the fact that you purchased this in May, I would assume, and maybe I'm wrong with this, your whole intent was to come before this council with a pilot from the very purchase, is that correct?
Sure, it's an interesting story. The previous pilot, the physical documentation was not presented to us by the previous owner. And in speaking with the city, it appears that there isn't physical record of the pilot, but obviously it's been implemented and the pilot has been in place as pro forma. So that was kind of the first thing we had to figure out, what pilot is in place, what's being paid by way of taxes, what's the extent of the current pilot, and what do we need to do to keep the 4% pilot throughout our stewardship?
I don't think you answered my question.
Sure.
The question was, was your intent to come for a pilot? You would have needed the money to make the repairs and the things that had to be done.
Yes, yes. To answer your question, that's right.
So that was your intent to begin with?
Correct, correct, correct.
Okay. Having said that, you know, when I look through this, first of all, I want to tell you that I'm not surprised that you had overwhelming tenant support.
Sure.
Not because of you.
Given the circumstances.
I just wanted to make clear, it's not because of you.
Of course.
It's the fact that they have wanted repairs made on that place forever, and the fact that there have been numerous people that have made promises for them, and so they're looking, grabbing at any straw at this point.
Sure.
When I look at some of the comments that you made in here about things that you had done, you talked about the entry, you talked about hiring for bedbug control and things like that, but then you made a statement that the ramp did not meet code and that there were trip hazards.
Sure.
So those are violations right there that you haven't taken care of. Why?
We are going to address them throughout the comprehensive renovation, but to your point, should we be required to do other things? I'm sure that's something we can look at.
My point is, is that you have unsafe conditions for seniors in that building right now, and I'm not sure why you're not taking care of it, other than the fact that you're waiting for council to give you a pilot, a 4%, which will go in in October, which by the time the building, you go through your contracting and everything else, wouldn't be until spring or summer of next year, and these clients, these residents are continuously dealing with unsafe conditions.
That's a fair point, Councilmember, and we'll take into consideration. Thank you.
When you talked about bedbugs, I know one of the previous owners and their management that if you had reoccurring bedbugs, the tenants were charged for the pest control. Do you charge the tenants for additional if they have to come back in?
Because we're HUD, HUD limits us from charging the residents unless we can prove without a doubt that they have created the problem. It's very hard to do that. At this, we're not charging. At this, we're not charging residents. We're actually, we're helping them with getting their laundry done. If they can't afford to do their laundry, we're giving them laundry tokens so that they can wash their clothes while the treatment is happening. We are helping them out in many ways of trying to get them services to help with the prep, because a lot of our residents aren't able to prep. So no, we're not charging them because this is a building-wide issue. We couldn't go through there and pinpoint any one person to say that it was their fault. So no, they're not being charged.
The new laundry equipment, what is the charge for doing laundry?
Sure. It, it is a dollar to wash and a dollar to dry, currently.
And, and we're, and we're talking about low-income people?
At laundromats, it, it's upwards of $250 to wash and $250 to dry, because I go to the laundromat.
You indicate on here that the average is going to be $70,000 per unit. Does that $70,000 round in the replacement of the furnace and that as considered a breakdown per unit?
That, yeah, that, that includes the comprehensive renovation, yes.
Okay. So what would be the physical, what would be the physical amount of improvements that would be for each unit? Not counting the, the?
Sure.
Electrical, the, the plumbing, the, you know, any of those, the heating?
Just, just for clarification, you want the breakdown of how many dollars per unit will go directly into the apartments themselves?
Correct.
Great. I don't have that with me right now, but I'm more than happy to provide that to, to the subcommittee and have that prepared for you guys.
Okay. I'd like to know what that is.
Absolutely.
Will you have Wi-Fi in the building?
Yes.
Per unit or in a common area?
We typically do common areas, but also install adapters in, in the hallways, which will reach into the, the apartments themselves, yes.
Thank you. All right, that's it for my questions, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Vice President Hussein, followed by Councilmember Dunbar.
Sure, just a couple of housekeeping questions first. Are, are the elevators in the building now all operable?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Are all elevators in the building now operable?
Operating. So I know that we have a resident elevator and then there's a service elevator. I can't speak to their operability, but I believe they are, yes.
They are?
Yes, yes.
Okay, what about TCRs, trash chute rooms, and your trash compactor, on all floors?
We do, we have, we don't have a trash, we do have a trash compactor, but we have a single floor. I'll, I'll let the property manager talk about this.
We do have, there are trash rooms. The trash compactor, my understanding is, the last management company quit using that because the chute had gotten plugged, so we need to get that unplugged. So those doors are closed, but we do have the, the trash, you know, we make sure trash gets out.
I'm sorry, I missed that. So I'm disabled, I'm up on the fourth floor, I need my trash disposed of. How do I do it now?
Well, they can call us and we'll come and get it. And we've told several senior citizens and disabled residents that if they need help with their trash, they'll give us a call.
I visited the property several, several months ago, and I was involved by the conditions, candidly. And it was, you know, it was apparent that the owner and the management company, you know, there was a dereliction of duty, period. And one of the things that I discussed with them at that time was the plugging of that, that chute. I cannot believe that it's still plugged, and I cannot believe that's still an issue.
And, and we have had so much on our plate as we've been in there.
I certainly understand that, but with all due respect, with all due respect.
Yeah, yeah.
Hold on. With all due respect, you all, you all took ownership of this building, you decided to allow yourselves to be inserted as the management company, so I don't care what's on your plate. Because you can't imagine, as we talk to the residents there, what's on their plate, okay? It's not a good situation, so I don't care.
That's duly noted.
Thank you. With regard to the, to the bedbugs, I would highly encourage not just the adjacent units, but the above and below units.
Sure. That might be taking place.
We are inspecting all of them on a, they, they do come twice a week. They are treating and re-treating and re-inspecting to continue to make sure that those that don't have it still do not.
Okay.
Those that they've eradicated are still do not have it. They're, they're re-inspecting on a regular basis. Sorry.
Okay, so, so when you took ownership and you inserted KMG, did KMG keep on any of the employees that were onsite, any of the onsite employees?
I don't believe so. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's entirely new staff, yes.
Okay. I have a quick question for law. In terms of the state statute that allows for the service fee in charge of, or I'm sorry, in lieu of taxes, property taxes, what, what are the thresholds there? What are the limits? How, how, in terms of duration, in terms of percentage? Can they, can they only go up to 40 years? Can they go up to 50? Can they go below 4%? How does it, what are the limitations there?
Generally, you can request from the municipality consideration to any kind of a pilot below or 9% and lower.
But to what? I know a 10% is by right. Are they able to say 1%, 2%, or is 4% the bottom? I think that's floor, correct?
I haven't seen anything lower than a 4%. I'm not aware of any restriction from some, for somebody to ask for something lower than a 4%.
Okay, if you could look into that, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Same, same with the duration.
Councilmember, I think that, I think one of the?
Councilmember, your microphone.
... in a location.
Oh, okay.
So I, I think you can do one more than 4%.
Yeah, if we can provide that with certainty, I'd appreciate that. But yeah, thank you. What, what about, so, and I understand that we don't know how much you're, you're looking to actually invest within the actual unit.
Sure.
But at a 4%, 40 years, and when you look at the number that you, you guys are quoting here, I'm assuming it would be substantial. What is, how does that affect, because we're talking about seniors, we're talking about people that have mobility issues.
Sure.
How does that affect certainty in terms of housing transancy? Is there a plan to move them from unit to unit as you get into units and fix?
Absolutely, that's a fantastic question, thank you.
What's the plan?
I think, I think that really the crux of your question is how we're going to implement this renovation.
Absolutely.
Right. So, and we do this across the country, we engage with a third-party relocation specialist, in this case, Housing Opportunities Unlimited. And what we do is a phased relocation and phased rehabilitation, where in this instance, given the nature of the rehab, we're going to be doing it by stacks, where we provide support, we provide off-site housing, we provide moving expense costs, we provide everything under the sun, so that the resident themselves has no burden on, other than having to physically move to another apartment for a short duration, and then we move them right back as soon as their apartment is, is finished. That's something that we're currently anticipating to take, if my memory serves me, between three and four weeks for the, for the, for the rehab to occur. And that primarily has to do with the installation of, of the new mechanical systems for the central air.
Okay. I appreciate that. Last thing for me, a lot of my questions were answered in DMP. Who, you, you referenced a general contractor you're working with, who is that?
It's a group called Paragon Construction Company.
Where are they from?
They are from, I believe, I know they're from New Mexico.
New Mexico.
You're correct. It's important to note that general contractor will hire the subcontractor base, which, like I mentioned, is roughly 80% local. And, and just for the record, this is just an anecdote, the proprietor is from Michigan, but I know that.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Councilmember Dunbar?
There was a question earlier about how much was going to be invested per unit if you received the 4% renovation. I'm, you said you didn't have that, but I'm looking at the hard cost scope of work.
Oh, sure.
And in the units section?
Oh, we have it right there, you're correct.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, I'm super absent-minded, I apologize.
Wondering if that's, we're all accurate with that.
It is right there, and I do apologize, I had the answer in front of me.
Okay, that's all right. I just, so we're looking at new appliances, doors and hardware, ceiling fan, unit signage, wireless emergency call system, countertops, tub surrounds, low-floor toilets, blinds and shades, LVP flooring, paint, accessibility upgrades, excuse me, repair cabinets, drywall, switch plates, outlets, smoke detectors, plumbing fixtures, exhaust fans and lighting, and that looks like the two combined together look like $22,000.
That's right.
Roughly $22,000 worth of improvements per unit.
Thank you so much for pointing that out. That's fantastic. We had the answer right in front of us, apologize for that.
Anyone else? Very good. First, I have one real quick question, please clarify, you bought in May of 2021?
Correct.
So three months ago?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to clarify, it was three months or 15, thank you. I also want to thank you for recognizing the mismanagement, the neglect, and the terrible circumstances under which many of those residents lived for far too long.
Sure.
And I can tell, I mean, this is an exciting project, it's, what's been, what's on paper looks very exciting. I can tell in your voices, the enthusiasm for the project, and I do look forward to hearing what our DMP committee comes up with after the next hearing. So thank you for being here tonight, thank you for answering our questions, please have a good night.
Thank you so much, we're very happy to be here and look forward to it, thank you so much.
I suggest cleaning the garbage chute before you come back to?
Absolutely, absolutely. Garbage chute, we're making notes, garbage chute is number one on the list, yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk. We are to community event announcements.
Oh, yeah, yeah. All right. I didn't ask, I just looked around. Go ahead, councilmember. I just want to point out, that clock is wrong. So everyone just be okay, it's not 10:30. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I wanted to make announcement for a couple of events that are happening this, this week, and then I'll, then I'll wait for the mayor to make his announcements, and I'll come behind him and remind him. I'm just messing with you. This Saturday, August 28th, Laugh is Life, it's a comedy show in honor of Marcus the Comedian. It's going to be at Sexton High School Auditorium, 102 McPherson Avenue at 6:00 PM. Miranda Burton Hinton is the mother of Marcus, and he was murdered last year. She has decided and has put together a foundation, and all the proceeds from this comedy show will go to Marcus the Comedian's Foundation. Tickets are $25, and if you're interested in donating or purchasing a ticket, please email at mirandaburtonhinton@gmail.com, or look on Facebook at Comedian P. Bates Comedy. So it's a great event for a good cause. The other thing I wanted to mention is the Women's Center of Greater Lansing has their open house on Wednesday at 5:30 PM at 710 East Michigan Avenue, another great organization in the city of Lansing. And I'll, I'll leave it there. Suits in the City has their September networking event. If you haven't been to one of those events, you are missing out. September 1st at 6:00 PM at The Urban Beat. Thank you.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Thank you. We all got an email today from Dick Pethley at the Board of Water and Light, which I want to get out because of the timely manner of this. So because of the pandemic, we didn't have utility shut-offs for a very long time, and the collection process is going to, it actually began already on August 9th, and that means the first shut-offs for non-payment would be on September 7th. It's going to be phased, because they obviously can't address all of this at one time, but the idea that they are going to be considering shut-offs again has put people into a panic mode for those who don't have the funds to cover what has been abated, basically, for the last 24 months or so. So anticipating that there will be problems for folks, BWL is teaming up with community partners, a lot of different agencies, and they are going to hold basically pandemic financial assistance meetings to help folks figure out what to do about the utility bills. And the first one is going to be Tuesday, August 31st, from 4:00 to 7:00 at Guyer Community Center, and the second one is Wednesday, September 1st, 4:00 to 7:00 at the Alfreda Schmidt Center. So anybody who is worried that now post-pandemic, since the, you know, the utility assistance is gone and the abatements for shut-offs is gone, for folks who need help to continue or start paying their bills, please go to either one of these events. Again, Tuesday, August 31st, 4:00 to 7:00 at Guyer, Wednesday, September 1st, 4:00 to 7:00 at Alfreda Schmidt. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember, Vice President Hussein?
Sure, I'll try to be quick. First, I want to thank folks that came out to our constituent contact meeting, I believe it was August 14th. We did that in a parking lot of 517 Coffee at 6030 South MLK, and it was awesome. So I want to first thank the owners, obviously of 517, for allowing us to kind of in a very unique way position, position ourselves in the back part of the parking lot. And we had just a, what I thought was a fantastic turnout, a great conversation. We had elected officials, we had candidates for office, we had various representatives from boards and commissions in the area, and most importantly, we had a number of citizens from South Lansing and really beyond. And we talked a lot about, fittingly enough, because we were on the corridor, talked a lot about corridor improvement, specifically South MLK. And, and we talked about small business support, we talked about kind of workforce development, connecting our workforce with, with employers, blood elimination and the like. And that conversation was led by Hannah Bryant from the Lansing Economic Area Partnership, so I want to thank her for being on hand as well. We are meeting in September, that will be September 11th, 10 to 12 noon. And for this iteration of our contact meetings, we're going to actually be at Wing Heaven Sports Haven, which is at 3812 South MLK. If you have not yet been there, come on out, at least for the food. They have the best burgers, turkey burgers, fantastic whole wings, great perch, catfish, and the like. So again, that is September 11th, 10 to 12 noon at 3812 South MLK. Quick ask of the, the mayor, I did send an email earlier, we are having a lot of problems with the South Lansing expansion in terms of the River Trail. So I did kick a number of pictures over to Brett Koschinski, that portion of the trail is not being kept up in the same manner as the other, what is it, 10 miles of River Trail that's not in South Lansing. There's a lot of, a lot of mattresses, baby strollers, shopping carts, you name it, it's there. So we certainly need a concerted effort to get out there and clean that up. And then lastly, this is an incredibly busy weekend, I want to shout out a couple, couple classmates of mine from, you know, my days at Everett High School, Justin Christian and Dave Jones, and then also somebody that I don't know as well, but he's doing great things for the community, Jody Clemmons. And they are, they have actually been for a number of years, they've been having a charity alumni basketball game, and, and most often it's included Sexton and Everett, alumni of Sexton and Everett, I think Brian Jackson, Councilman Jackson actually has participated in that event in the past. And it is, it is once again time, this is a charitable effort, all money does go to, as I understand it, local nonprofits and things of that nature. And it starts on Friday, and there is an alumni tailgate party, and this is for the Everett versus Sexton game. Tailgate will begin at 3:00 PM inside of Sexton Stadium, game starts at 5:00 PM. There will be food for sale provided by Southside Smithy's Barbecue, and there will be Sexton memorabilia also for sale during the tailgate. And then the basketball game actually takes place the next day, August 28th, it won't conflict with, what is it again? Laugh is Love?
Love.
Yeah, because it is at 2:00 PM. So doors will open at 1:00 PM. This is at the Don Johnson Fieldhouse on Pennsylvania Avenue. Let's see, entry is $5, there are opportunities for pre-sale tickets, and if you are interested and you want to get your tickets in advance, please call Justin Christian at 517-775-7975. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Clerk?
Okay, we are to comment, or I'm sorry, we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details.
Hi, I'm Greta Fuehmann with the Lansing Board of Water and Light, and I am basically here to reiterate everything that Councilmember Dunbar already said. So BWL has teamed up with a whole bunch of community partners to do a, two financial pandemic relief fairs. One will be on August 31st at Guyer, the other one will be on September 1st at Alfreda Schmidt, they're from 4:00 to 7:00. And we'll actually be allowing people to apply for services right there. So we will have Capitol Air Housing Partnerships there with Advent House and Holy Cross Ministries, and they'll be able to actually start the application process. process right there for rental, mortgage, or utility assistance. We'll also have the food bank there, they'll be able to sign up for SNAP, and BWL will be there. We'll have customer service reps there to start flexible payment plans with people, help them sign up for the new customer portal, and just get their bill over to the other people so that they can start holds and things like that for application process. So we'll be doing all of that right onsite, and we're really excited about it, and Raleigh's going to talk too, just to reiterate how great the partnership is.
Thanks, Breanna. I'm just here to reiterate that while the event is being hosted by the Board of Water and Light, for folks who are struggling to maintain their rent, internet payments, or mortgage payments in Ingham County, we can now say collectively, thanks to the city of Lansing, East Lansing, Ingham County, and Mishna, that there are dollars available to those residents. So again, if you're in Ingham County and you're behind on your utilities, rent, mortgage, or internet payment, you should come to these fairs. If you can't make it to these fairs, to go to our website, go to the city of Lansing's website, and you'll be able to get those applications started. Thanks.
Thank you. And seeing other community event announcements, I will announce speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters today includes the scheduled public hearings, as well as the items on the consent agenda and resolutions for action. We'll give you one more minute to sign up. That's the blue form in the back. And also, if you are here for the show cause hearing, that is the green form in the back. I'll go ahead and call that out if anybody is here for that. Please sign up in the next minute. That's the green form. So if you're here about 125 East Mount Pope, please go and fill that out as quickly as possible. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, Mr. President. I want to congratulate a whole variety of people with many successful events over the last week or two. We had an incredibly successful senior fair. It was awesome. We had some people who took food to go, we had some people who enjoyed food there, we had breakfast, we had, the meatloaf was incredible. So just like every year, it was great to have it again. But it was just wonderful to see people out. Everybody was wearing masks. They ate, they put their masks back on. We had some folks who were dancing, and it was really nice to see that happen again. So I was there a good chunk of the day and just had a blast. So thank you to all the seniors, and thank you to our park staff who are incredible. We had a very successful art feast in Old Town, we had a very successful arts in the park at Adado. We have a whole variety of events coming up. We, Nancy Malo, two or three weeks ago, mentioned the East Side Summer Fest, which is coming up Friday and Saturday, 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM on Friday, and 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM on Saturday on Michigan Avenue on the east side. It's free, and I know our staff worked very hard with Nancy and many of the businesses there to get that set up. I know this council, I believe, allocated some money last time. So it should be a lot of fun for those on the east side. Our arts grants are now available. We all passed money for arts grants here in Lansing Arts and Culture Grants, and those are now available. The application deadline is September 14th, and the grant information can be found at lansingarts.org/program/grants. That's the Lansing Arts Council site. So that's good news to get some art grants out. We've got big dollars and we've got smaller dollars, so I hope all of our artists will apply. We have provided grants for the second round of Lansing Cares Small Business Assistance Program. It included nine Lansing small businesses. They received a little over $100,000 in forgivable loans, so those dollars are out, and now we are eagerly awaiting the county's Sunrise Program, where they're giving out something like $11 million throughout the county, and we certainly expect that many of those dollars will be given out here. Our Human Relations and Community Service Department has finalized our Racial Equity Program grant. These are the dollars that were passed by council, and I had supported adding the additional 0.1% for racial equity. There are two Zoom informational sessions coming up to provide an opportunity for those interested to request dollars and discuss the RFQP, and it's August 24th at 10:00 AM and September 1st at 1:30 PM. So you can go to their website for that. Councilwoman Spitzley mentioned Laugh is Life, which I gave to, I hope everybody will donate to. I actually, I think I bought several tickets and just told them to donate the other tickets, but I think that's, it's incredible, so I'm glad they're doing that. August 26 through 28th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, is a three-day furniture donation drive. St. Vincent Catholic Charities, I believe this is for the Afghan refugees who we think are going to be resettling. They are asking for furniture. Gently used, this isn't like get rid of your old trashy furniture. This is gently used furniture, but if you have gently used furniture, please bring it to St. Vincent Catholic Charities for their furniture donation drive, August 26th to 28th, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The Board of Water and Light was mentioned several times. If they're still here, thank you. I know our Office of Financial Empowerment is sharing that with everybody, so Amber Paxton mentioned it to me, but it's already been mentioned twice, so I won't mention it a third time again. September 10th, you all in the budget allocated some money for expungement work, and we will have our expungement clinic and community resource fair at the Letts Community Center on Friday, September 10th. The event is open to the public, but individuals interested in expunging a criminal conviction are encouraged to pre-register. I think this is going to be a great event. I know our legal department, so for Jim, our legal department, especially Amanda O'Boyle, are working so hard on this, and they're partnering with many others, with Congresswoman's office and several others, and I think it's going to be a great event. Representative Graham Filler from the DeWitt area is actually involved also. He passed the legislation. I want to compliment Councilwoman Spitzley. This Friday, she and I together are going to be doing a Gift of Life organ donation event, but she really took lead on this, and I appreciate her work, working with John Edmund, creating the Amaya Alyssa Edmund Gift of Life Day to create awareness for organ donation, which is tremendously important. I believe the recipient of her organs will be there as well. So thank you, Councilwoman, and I'm honored to stand with you and talk about the importance here in Lansing. And finally, I'll be done, I want to offer congratulations to Glenn Freeman III on his final retirement from the Greater Lansing Labor Council. He's being honored this week, and we all know Glenn, and I'm happy that he's actually able to retire finally this time, I think. But if he's out there watching somewhere, congratulations to Glenn. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clerk?
Okay, we have a show cause hearing tonight in consideration of orders to make safer demolish for 125 East Mount Pope Avenue. We do not have anyone that has signed in to speak on that item.
Okay. Councilmember Wood, did you have anything to add?
Thank you. The original red tag date on this was June 7, 2020. The assessed value of the, is $29,700. The estimated repairs are $195,000, and no one showed up at the public safety meeting, and this is a fire damaged property. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, so for the referral of the show cause hearing?
Committee on Public Safety.
All right, we are to public comment on legislative matters. We have five public hearings. Four of them have very similar language, so I will just simply state the topic simply. The pilot for Apartments West, which we heard about in detail tonight, the pilot for Walter French, the pilot for Cedar Place, and the pilot for the Porter Senior Apartments. And then the fifth public hearing is in consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 658 to replace willful annoyance with the prohibition that no person shall threaten another person by word of mouth, gesture, or other physical action that accosts, molests, or otherwise harasses that person. And we have no members of the public who have signed in to speak on legislative matters.
Before we move on, anything to add, Councilmember Spitzley? Very good. We will let the hearing stand for themselves. Mr. Clerk, let's move on.
We have the, on the referral of the public hearings, numbers eight through 11?
The Committee on Public, Committee on Development Planning.
And number 12, the annoying person.
The Committee on Equity Diversity Inclusion.
Okay, then we are to the consent agenda. Item 13 was already taken up, so it includes items 14 and 15.
Mr. Vice President?
Sure. So we have two items on the consent agenda tonight. The first is a resolution of reappointment for Nancy Malo, as the first ward member of the Board of Public Service, for a term to expire June 30 of 2025. And the second is a fee reduction resolution for non-sufficient funds pertaining to check fees, and this would reduce the fee from $50 to $25.
All right.
With that being said, I move the consent agenda.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we have a declaration of May 31st is the Amaya Alyssa Edmund's Gift of Life Day.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President. The mayor has already mentioned it, so I won't go into too much. I just want to let you know and let the public know that this month of August is National Minority Donor Awareness Month. And National Minority Donor Awareness Month stems from the National Minority Donor Awareness Week founded in 1996. You know, we thought it was critically important to highlight the need for more education and awareness of minorities for organ donation. For the, you know, the organ donation, particularly for kidneys, minorities make the largest percentage of folks waiting for a kidney simply because of the history of high blood pressure and diabetes. And so we will be, and then we have three families here in the city of Lansing that have made that, you know, three minority families that have made that decision to have their loved ones' organs donated, which I think is incredible that we have that. And so we're going to be having an event this week, Friday at 10:00 AM. Everybody's invited, you'll be getting, but to, you know, honor those families and to officially proclaim that May 31st as the Amaya Alyssa Edmund's Gift of Life Day. And with that, I'll move the resolution. It will be officially given to them on Friday.
Thank you. That is a proper motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
Our next resolution is the grant acceptance.
Councilmember Wood?
Thank you, President Spadeford. The grant that we have before us is for $100,000. There will, this will probably cost a little bit more than that before this is all said and done. What this will do will allow the finance, the Treasurers Office to purchase a large commercial scanner to do projects such as income tax and taxes through this large scanner. It's something that Grand Rapids has utilized in the past, and they have been working closely with them. What this would also do is currently we have our services with CoAmerica that collects information, and we pay between $125,000 to $150,000 a year, and that would be a cost that would be reduced. The only additional cost to this would be temporary help at the time that scanning projects would be needed. So with that, I would move the acceptance of the grant.
It's a proper motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, six, seven, six, zero.
All right, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government related matters. If you wish to speak on any city matter, please sign the yellow form within the next minute. And in the meantime, we are to reports of officers, boards, and commissions.
Mr. Vice President?
Sure. I move that all items be considered as read in full and appropriate referrals be made by you, President Spadeford.
Gladly accept that motion. Any, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Mr. Clerk?
Okay, we have minutes of boards and commissions.
Placed on file.
Fireworks display license.
Committee on City Operations.
Items from the mayor, sole source purchase for the Police Department for school crossing guard services.
Committee on Ways and Means.
An ordinance to add Chapter 256 and a separate resolution setting the public hearing for that.
The Committee of the Whole.
Grant Acceptance, Stop Violence Against Women grant.
Committee on Ways and Means.
Setting a show cause hearing and the actual resolution adopting orders to make safer demolish to 4511 South Martin Luther King Boulevard.
Public Safety.
And Grant Acceptance, U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Continuum of Care.
Committee on Ways and Means.
Communications and Petitions, a claim appeal for trash removal fees at 1532 Illinois.
Committee on City Operations.
And an affidavit of disclosure, Willard Walker of the Human Relations and Community Services Department.
The City Ethics Board.
We are to motion of excused absence.
I would entertain a motion to excuse the absent members by Councilmember Spitzley. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, additional remarks by councilmembers?
I see none.
Or the mayor?
He knows better.
All right, we are to public comment on city government related matters. We have Cynthia Ward.
Your Honor?
Thank you for waiting.
Good evening, Council. I'm Cynthia Ward. I felt like I should, I should have left maybe 30 minutes ago, because I'm going to now repeat what has already been stated by Councilmember Dunbar, the representative from the Board of Water and Light, from the mayor, and then from the other agency representative. But I wanted to come before city council because I still have tenants who are coming to court who are unaware of the COVID emergency rental assistance that is available. So I am very happy to have, to hear it mentioned several times this evening. And because I'm not a quitter, I decided not to leave and that I will stay to the end of the meeting and offer, and also offer my public comments on the matter. It was just last week that I learned for the first time that internet assistance was also available to tenants, which is also very beneficial. So I was very happy to hear that offered this evening. As you know, we're conducting our court proceedings in a hybrid manner, so many of our tenants have to have internet access to connect to our court proceedings by Zoom. So for those tenants out there who may not need necessarily assistance with rental assistance, certainly the utility assistance is available, as well as I've just learned last week that there's internet assistance that is available that would be paid as a stipend directly to the tenants. The latest information that I receive says that there is about 16 points, something, $16.3 million that's still available of Ingham County. I know that our district court, we were large users of that COVID money. Our tenants are still struggling. We give them the information for every eviction matter that is filed. Every tenant is made aware of the rental assistance, but I guess you can't share that information enough because people are still struggling and having difficult times. So thank you for giving me an opportunity to share that, but I also thank you for your own initiative in sharing that information. Have a good evening. It's nice to see all of you.
You too, Judge.
And that was our final speaker.
All right. Well, at 9:48, I will declare this meeting a Lansing City Council adjourned.